No, we don't. Okay, well, let's go ahead and get started. Good evening. This is our Planning Commission public hearing for July 10th. I'm gonna start with roll call, please.
John Agosta.
Colleen Cruz.
AJ Summers.
Rich Leevee.
Brian Adams.
Lou Totoro.
David Box.
Perfect. Before we begin Agenda items this evening, John, why don't I send it to you first?
Yep. I want to take a moment before we start tonight and before we begin tonight's meeting. I want to acknowledge the deep grief our community is going through following last week's loss of a young person after her struggles with mental health. A memorial service is happening now over at Hellson Hill. As we focus on city planning, let's also remember that the health and well-being of our people is fundamental to everything we do. So please join me in a brief moment of reflection before we begin. Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Brian.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Also, if there's anybody here this evening who would like to give us public comment on something not on tonight's agenda items, now would be the time for something like that. Okay? Seeing none, and online, if you have a public comment item, you would raise your Zoom hand, and we can call on you and unmute you. Okay, seeing none there either. We'll get into our agenda items. This first agenda item is PL 2025-0199 Steamboat Christian Academy, and I'm going to recuse myself as part of the design team.
Thank you, Brian. Does the applicant have a presentation? Come on down.
See if I can successfully. I'm gonna let ask Toby. Thank you, Toby. Okay, good evening. Everyone here, we okay? All right. My name is Jen Foss, and I'm board chair for Steamboat Christian Academy. So on behalf of the entire school, our board, and our administration, I want to thank all of you commissioners for your time this evening. And just above that, thank you for all you do and your service to this community to really help pave the way and allow great things to happen. Steamboat Christian Academy, our vision is to build leaders that love God and love people by instilling excellence in faith, academics, and stewardship. And in regards to our situation this evening, I really want to emphasize that third tenant stewardship. Community, service, and compassion is crucial to our program, and it's one of our biggest tenants. We're really trying to pour into students and help them learn to use their time, their talents, and resources to serve others and make the community around them a better place. Now, I'll get into some basic facts and some information so that everyone has accurate information regarding our plans for this upcoming school year. Steamboat Christian Academy has been successfully operating for two years now, and I'm happy and thrilled to report we have wonderful relationships that we have maintained with our previous neighbors over at the Steamboat Christian Center. I have letters. I know they've sent them to Toby just with resounding reviews mentioning respectful ways students and staff have interacted with the neighborhood. They've paid great care and attention to maintaining a peaceful and welcoming environment. There's been other comments saying we've maintained smooth flow of traffic during drop-off and pickup. We've maintained a quiet presence. One neighbor even went so far to say that we were a delight. They appreciated the students and staff members' joyful and respectful interactions. And as someone that leads that school board, that makes us proud because that's our goal, to raise citizens that are a blessing and have a positive impact on this community. This year, we do have a few changes, and so that's leading to a large reduction in size. It's really a time of rebuilding and regrowth. This school year, the '25-'26 school year, we will be offering grades K through sixth. There is a reduction in our previous size. Our current enrollment is 22 students in those grades K through sixth. Our goal is to have 30 this year. We have requested to have 40 with our permit because we always plan with growth in mind. We would never have more than 40 at this site. We feel that this site allows for up to 40 students to promote safe learning that aligns with our educational practices. It also helps, it aligns with the church and their ministry needs and helps protect the integrity of the neighborhood. Our intended use at Concordia is temporary while we search for our permanent long-term home. A little bit more about SCA. We provide mixed-age learning classes, and we will be utilizing their five existing classrooms. This coming school year, we have five full-time staff members. We have our head of school, Mrs. Tiffany Dixon, who will be leading four full-time teachers. Something else to note is Thursdays, we will be off-campus for the whole morning so that our students can engage in their service projects, outdoor learning, and various community field trips. A few more details and facts for everyone. We start school at 8:45 a.m. School dismisses at 2:15 p.m. Friday dismissal is at 12 noon. These times I'd like to highlight are all outside of peak traffic hours for Amethyst. Our five staff members will arrive at 8 a.m., and they will depart at 3 p.m. I'd like to take note of a recent traffic study completed by Fox Tuttle Engineering. They calculated two and a half students per car, which equals 16 trips for drop-off and 16 trips for pickup should we reach that number of 40 students. Currently, we are at nine trips with 22 students, so nine car trips in the morning and nine car trips in the afternoon for families to bring their kids to and from school. I'd also like to highlight that many of these 22 students would most likely be attending the surrounding schools, Strawberry Park Elementary and Steamboat Springs Middle School, if they were not to attend SCA. So we don't have much, if any, additional impact to Amethyst than would otherwise exist. Concordia, as currently set up, provides ample parking. They exceed the two spaces per classroom requirement. We have two daily recesses scheduled by our administrator. Each is approximately 30 minutes in length, so that's less than 60 minutes of daily recess. And recess will be held, if it's on the blacktop, will be on the opposite side of Concordia, the side away from the drive and away from the houses. We also plan to take advantage of the parks and trails and fields nearby. We plan to use the facility without any exterior remodel, growth, or changes. I realize it's hard to see in the lighting, but this is an architectural drawing of the campus. The star indicates Concordia Lutheran Church. It looks like a very faint blue line on the screen, but that is Amethyst. And the blue truck is where we will direct our cars of family members dropping off to drive in. They will follow the red lines around. Where the red line stops, students will exit. They will walk the sidewalk up to where that backpack is and enter that door. That will be the point of entry and exit. So just as at our previous location, we communicate very clearly with our families expectations for drop-off and pickup and ensure safety above everything else. Okay. As I just mentioned, safety is at the forefront of our minds, always. And we care deeply about being respectful neighbors. As I mentioned earlier, we have resounding reviews from our other neighbors. That's very important to us, particularly since we are emphasizing character and developing kids that are compassionate and kind and respectful. So that is modeled from the top-down in our learning community. We've also identified, as we just saw, procedures for flow of traffic to ensure safe and efficient drop-off and pickup. And again, we have a perfect past track record of this. Even if we reach 40 students, we would have a maximum of 16 trips per day with parents. Currently, we're at 22 students, and so according to calculations, that is nine car trips. I want to remind everyone that it's very common in the community that we all live and love of Steamboat for private schools to exist within neighborhoods, preschools, private schools, and they've been very successful in being able to do so in close proximity to homes. And speaking of homes, this is a temporary home for Steamboat Christian Academy. As in the future, we do hope and continue, hope to continue to grow even beyond that 40. I would love to address one concern noted by community members. Students traveling to other schools, so Steamboat Springs High School and Steamboat Springs Middle School via bikes on the trail system or on the road, those students will all be seated in their desks prior to our start of school. So our parents will not even be driving into the parking lot until all other students in all of Steamboat Springs are seated in their classrooms with our 8:45 start time. We don't receive students much earlier than that. Another thing I'd love to address is we don't have excessive noise. We don't use P A systems. We don't use bells. We don't have sporting events. Our students do participate in the middle school sports and obviously in a variety of community sports, but we don't bring on any of that noise associated with those elements. I'd also like to emphasize the fact that between Steamboat Springs High School, Steamboat Springs Middle School, and SPE, there are combined over 1,600 students, 1,600 students. Right now, we're talking about 22 students, potentially up to 40, but 22 students. And so the impact of 22 students is immeasurable in comparison to the 16,000 students that access those three combined schools each and every day. I'd love to end just showing some pictures that really embody the heart and spirit of our school because it's important, and it's a school that our community needs, a school that models leadership and excellence and kindness and compassion. In light of today's event, sorry. Here, our students are doing a river cleanup. You'll see our students with orange bags all over town, picking up trash and caring for neighborhoods and parks. Our older students on the right, they served with Denver Dream Center and helped with some homeless outreach events. Couple other examples, we love supporting community events. You'll see our students all over. For the last two years, we've found great joy in helping organize and set up for Run Rabbit Run. Our students loaded a truck, the one that went out to Long Lake, and they were so thrilled. A week later, we had an offer, "Please sign up again next year," and they want us to run a whole aid station. So we're looking forward to that. It's important to teach our students stewardship, and so we have amazing partnerships with local ranchers and farmers, and our students are really learning healthy and sustainable ranching and farming practices and also engaging in projects, bless you, to care for these ranches. Ultimately, servant leadership is the heart of our program. It is the heartbeat of SCA, and we want to teach students to care and exemplify love on a very deep level to our community. So I thought it was fun to just share some pictures. Our students on the left are preparing a meal for skate church. Our students in the middle are learning about animal conservation. And then our student on the right is analyzing bacteria from a pond as the students were studying ways to promote clean and healthy and safe waterways. Thank you all so much for your time and your thoughtful consideration. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Does staff have a presentation?
Yeah. Toby Stoffer, senior planner. So as was mentioned, this is the Steamboat Christian Academy. I request for conditional use to add an elementary school to the existing Concordia Lutheran Church site in an RN one-zone district. As was stated, there will be a maximum capacity of 40 students. The school will use five existing classrooms and the existing access and parking lot. No site improvements are proposed or required. 10 parking spaces are required, and 10 are provided at the school. There are also 49 total spaces on the site. The school use will not overlap with the church use. School hours would be from 8:45 to 2:15. The future land use classification for the area is neighborhood residential low. Compatible development-like schools is appropriate in this classification. The community plan supports an integrated and compatible mix of uses, including those that serve year-round residents. The purpose of the RN one-zone district is to provide areas for one-family and two-family residential uses, as well as limited non-residential uses that are complementary to and compatible with a residential neighborhood. We do find that this proposed use is consistent with the purpose of the zone district. It is common to have schools within residential zone districts as those uses often complement residential uses. As you know, we have received some public comment from the surrounding neighbors, in part about traffic concerns and other concerns. We have reviewed a traffic waiver for this project, and we can answer more questions about that if you have them. However, the proposed trips do occur outside of the peak AM and PM hours and should have minimal impact on the surrounding area. The site does have sufficient circulation for pickup and drop-off and more parking spaces than are required for the two uses to function on the site, especially given that they won't be at the same time. Some of the other comment included concerns about noise, expansion, enforcement, precedent for other commercial or institutional uses, temporary approval, and compliance with the previous approval. Regarding noise, school uses can generate noise, but we find that sounds from schools can be similar to what is expected and typical in a residential setting. Regarding expansion, again, as noted, the project includes a maximum of 40 students, seven teachers, five classrooms, and 10 parking spaces. So this approval is specific and can't be expanded without going through an additional public process like this one to evaluate the impacts. The owners and operators of this school will need to comply with any terms of this approval, including the student maximum parking spaces and the condition that the two uses are not, will not operate at the same time. The city can proactively enforce on this approval and confirm their in compliance, or we can also respond to complaints if there's any concerns in the future. So if there are any enforcement issues, we'll investigate and make sure that they are operating within their approval. Approval of this use should not create any precedent to allow any other uses to be approved. Commercial uses are generally prohibited in the RN one-zone district. This use is an institutional use, and as always, each use is approved on its own merits and does need to comply with the criteria for approval. Any future use on this site would need to be evaluated and approved independently before it could operate. And if it was conditional, it would need to go through this same public process. The applicant has mentioned the temporary nature of their approval. I do want to reiterate that this request is based on the application materials, which is already an approval, so we don't specify a minimum or maximum time for that approval with this request. So that your decision tonight should probably be based on the materials, the application materials that you have. Regarding the previous approval for the church, I did look through those old approvals. The church does still seem to be operating within its approved parameters. This use wouldn't impact how that use operates or change that previous approval, and this school use, if it was approved, would operate under its own approval, so the two uses would operate independently. We do recommend approval of this project with the one condition. And I did receive one additional public comment towards the end of the day that didn't make it into the packet that you had. It's related to Amethyst Drive, and there were concerns from neighbors nearby that they're interested. This letter was to Planning Commission and to City Council to indicate that they would like Amethyst to become much more friendly to pedestrians and bikers to address some traffic concern. So I wanted to give that into the record since you hadn't seen it yet.
Thank you. Commissioners, questions for the applicant or for staff?
I've got a question for staff. It seems we don't usually deal with conditional uses on a permanent basis. What was the rationale?
Conditional uses actually are frequently permanent, so we do sometimes have conditional uses that are temporary. We've done that with office uses in the downtown, for instance, that are not always compatible with our vision for downtown. We approved some of those on a temporary basis, but most of our conditional uses are approved in perpetuity.
Can I tag on to your question? With the case, with that case, could we condition this to be time-bound, or could we not, based on the application?
You might have to find that it was related to an impact or to the criteria for approval to add a condition. We don't always recommend a time-sensitive condition. We don't always recommend a time-sensitive condition. Those can be difficult to enforce and may not be necessary. The use, if it grows beyond its bounds, it'll have to move. Or if it shrinks beyond the space, it'll have to move. So it may be best to see how this use takes its course, but you can consider it.
Thank you.
I have a related question for the applicant. If your intention is to be here for a temporary amount of time, why was it not a temporary application?
So we saw advisement from a commissioner, and we were guided that this was the permitting process for conditional use. So two years ago, three years ago now, we applied for a conditional use permit to be housed within Steamboat Christian Center off of Ottery Road. And so we were there, and so we were applying for a conditional use permit to be in this space until we find our permanent home based on advisement and just following city policies from our understanding. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
So as part of one of the letters that we received was, I guess there was a, I'm going to destroy the last name, Pastor Muley or... The pastor over at the Congedarian Church, basically he did flyers for the neighborhood. That seemed like there was a... And part of that flyers, he stated that the use would be just for nine months for the 2025 or 26 school year. So can you just shed some more light around, because there definitely was communication to the community that this was a temporary basis? So can you help us understand your process, your path, how long you really think you're going to be there versus?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you. So Pastor John, their church has graciously agreed to host us and partner in this ministry together because the school needs a place to be housed. And so they have offered their five classrooms to us, and they sent a letter to neighbors just offering to speak and communicate and hear their concerns so that we could provide accurate information. And so in our relationship with Concordia, we have like a nine-month agreement with them, and halfway through the school year, we will work with them, is this working for you as a church? Is this working for us as a school? Do we want to stay on behalf of our conditional use permit for a second year? Or is our permanent home ready? And are we ready to move on? And so I think he was speaking of sort of the nine-month internal terms of relationship that we've come to agreement upon with them. We just, in terms of, I don't want to say transactions because it's not a transaction with the church, but it's always good to be forthright and clear with expectations when you're partnering with someone. And so that's what the church in our school wanted to do. So those are sort of our terms. Does that make sense?
That makes sense. And have you started the process of a permanent location?
We have been investigating ongoing permanent locations since the beginning of our school. This will be our third year, so a little over three years ago. So yes, we have investigations and plans in motion. Thank you.
I have other questions, but if other people have questions around this topic?
Go for it.
Go for it. So traffic is actually, you know, obviously one of the top of the many issues. I'm more visual, I guess, and can you help, you can still use words here, but can you still help me map out the ridership times for your school and how you feel that they are mapping into the ridership times of Steamboat School District?
Sure. So from my understanding, I have one going into high school. I don't recall if the high school, I think it starts at 8:15. And then I have one that attends Steamboat Springs Middle School, and I know he's to be in his seat at 8:25. And so when we drop off, when we've dropped off at those locations, and when I dropped off at Strawberry Park Elementary a couple of years back, I was always well off of Amethyst and well on my way to my residence where I work from off Fish Creek Falls by, you know, 8:30. At Steamboat Christian Academy, we don't accept students before 8:35, 8:40. That was a part of our conditional use permit last time. So traffic, from my experience, after dropping off at those surrounding schools is cleared prior to any incoming cars from our 22 students, a maximum of 40 students at that time. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. And so I can speak personally from my experience of being on the road and being a parent, taking my kids to school.
So that's the morning, so that helped me understand the morning. The afternoon?
The afternoon is great because with a 2:15 dismissal, we are well ahead of that 3:25 at Strawberry, or Steamboat Springs Middle School's 3:20, 3:35, they tier it. So I believe the oldest kids get out a little bit later. And then Strawberry Park, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, they start dismissing kindergarten at 3:10, 3:15. So none of our public schools dismiss prior to 3 o'clock. It's all after the 3 o'clock hour. We dismiss at 2:15. So our students are out and well on their way before anyone is coming anywhere near pickup for those schools. And that's intentional as part of our learning model. We have shorter days. And then Fridays, of course, we have a noon dismissal. And so there's no interaction there either. So we really don't have any crossover on those roads.
Okay. Then a question I have before I hand it over to the other commissioners. The 40, I don't know if this is a question for Toby or you. How do we enforce it? I see that as part of the motion, that it is limited to 40? So we can legally limit them to 40?
Yes. The supplemental materials are specific to 40 students based on all of the parameters that we've been talking about. We can enforce that by checking in annually, or it can be enforced through reporting if we wanted to. We haven't specified that. We didn't specify that on the previous use approval here. So for the most part, it will probably just be on our system, or it could be based on code enforcement complaints.
Okay. Thank you.
This is for staff. You indicated that there was a waiver for the traffic study. However, I noticed that Emrick is here, and he's anxious to speak. And so I was wondering if he could tell us about the traffic conditions currently?
Sure. Emrick Saltus, Community Development Engineer for the city. So, and maybe just clarification, when you are asking for existing conditions, how Amethyst is currently functioning today? Sure. So we don't have exact numbers, but we have some resources that provide us with an estimate related to existing traffic volumes. And so Amethyst is classified as a collector street. So it can range anywhere between 1,000 cars a day to 6,000 cars a day. It currently is functioning right around 2,500 cars a day. So there is that additional room for capacity until it reaches level of service limits where improvements need to start being made to accommodate those additional capacity.
Okay. And any sense of the impact of timing when kids are being dropped off and picked up on that traffic load?
Can you expand further on that?
Well, the applicant has said that they're dropping off later than everybody, and they're letting out earlier than everybody. So when you look at the traffic load on Amethyst, that would be some maximum number or max peak time?
Yeah, yeah. So with traffic studies, we typically require that the traffic engineers evaluate the development-generated traffic during the peak hour, which there's an A M and P M peak hour. Typically, it varies from street to street. That ranges between 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning. So with the school start times being at 8:30 or 8:45, I believe, that would be after that peak hour timeframe. Not to say that there may be a few trips during that peak hour, but it would be on the tail end.
Thank you.
I have a question to tag on regarding the timing. Toby, I see in the draft resolution, it doesn't mention the timing of the school because it's in the application. Are they tied to that, or would that need to be added to the resolution?
They are tied to the information that's in the application materials.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions?
I have a question for the applicant. You'll have to come up again. Of your 22 students and five staff members, how many individual families does that represent? And you can ballpark it. I know you probably don't have the exact number, but...
I'm trying to think on this year's numbers. I'd say 10. We have a lot of siblings. We have families with two, three. I don't think we have any fours this year because that family has left the Yampa Valley, but we do have a lot of siblings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead.
I read it. There was one comment, and this might be for staff, that indicated the H O A was opposed to this, but I didn't see anything from the H O A. I saw something from a citizen representing what they thought the H O A thought.
Yeah, I think that's accurate. I don't recall seeing anything that was signed by the H O A or from the H O A president or board members. They may be present tonight, but I do believe we heard from some of the neighbors in this subdivision. It's a four-lot subdivision, so there's three residential lots with the church lot. So that would be the H O A. I do understand that they have some covenants, and I believe they may be concerned about those covenants. As you know, as we've talked about before, we don't enforce covenants. That's going to be a private agreement. But we do feel like that this use is consistent and compliant with the site, so it shouldn't cause the site or anything on the site to change. It should not change any nature of the church. So we would hope that it does comply with covenants, even though we haven't looked through those ourselves.
So just so I'm clear, if the H O A finds that their covenants are being violated, it's up to them to enforce it?
That's true.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, Rebecca, this is a question for you. So this is a decision here. So basically, whatever Planning Commission decides is what is planned for and will not go before City Council. Is that correct?
That's correct. City Council has authorized the Planning Commission to make decisions on conditional use applications. So your decision is considered a final decision. There are two avenues by which that decision, two avenues by which this application could make its way to City Council. Council always, for conditional uses and Planning Commission decisions, has a call-up option. So if one or more individual council members feels that you made your decision in error, they could call this project up for final decision. Or either the applicant or another aggrieved party could appeal the decision, and that would force it to go up to City Council. If neither of those happen within 10 days of your decision date, then the decision will be final.
Okay, so they have 10, okay, so you have 10 days for that. All right, thank you.
I have one question for staff. Emrick, it's been the number of 2.5 peoples per car trip. Is that a standard for institutional uses? Where does that number come from?
I believe, not 100% certain. However, I believe it comes from the I T E, which is the Trip Generation Manual. The other route that it may be depended on, which I think was mentioned, that it came from a previous traffic study that was performed and prepared by Fox Tuttle for the previous location that the school was at. So I want to provide some detail. I think there was some input on number of families as well that played into what that trips per student came out to be.
And as an engineer, you feel this number is within the range of reality?
I would say it's accurate, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions from commissioners?
Just one last question for Jen. Would you consider a, I have the right term, time-based conditional?
Time-bound?
Approval?
Maybe?
Condition of approval? Is that where you're going?
Yeah, but there's a term for basically, let's say, two years.
Temporary.
Temporary, oh, sorry, temporary. That's...
Great word.
Yeah.
That's a good question. So are you asking if we would consider a two-year?
Would you be open to a two-year temporary conditional use?
I mean, we'd be open to that over nothing. But yes, I mean, this is supposed to be a temporary home, but I think the big and important piece to look at here is that this permit is for 40 students. And so regardless of our growth or our desire to grow or how many students want to enroll, we know we're applying for this and we're stepping into this knowing that we would never ask for or host more than 40 students. And so I think that that's the biggest piece of information, and that's what we should be linking, linking ourselves to. We're not going to grow beyond capacity, and that's the capacity that we've deemed appropriate for our school in order to manage and uphold the quality and integrity of our programming based on the size and also with Concordia and the neighborhood in mind. Thank you.
This is for Jen as well. I recall in the first approval, where you previously were, traffic was also discussed. Were there any complaints about traffic?
We did not have a single complaint to the school for traffic. And perhaps the church did for their use on the weekends, but for our students, we did not have any complaints. And I think that the neighbors on the right side, and it's a pretty sizable neighborhood, I think they actually appreciated because we enforced very strict drop-off and pickup procedures. We actually shared a driveway, an entrance with a whole community, the River Walk community, with a back house on the far side of the parking lot and then our school. We never received one single complaint. And a neighbor actually who has young kids and has young kids that ride their bikes around and they walk their dogs around, actually commented how they appreciated our attentiveness to safety. And I think that that sort of permeated into their neighborhood and their neighborhood values, I'd have to say.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment. For those of you who would like to make public comment, come down to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes. And those of you online will get to you as soon as we're done with in-person. So any public comment, please come down and tell us your thoughts.
Can I make one clarification? I'm sorry, Dana Tredway, Lot 1 Concordia subdivision. I'm actually on the corner, turning into Concordia Lane where the church is. The church sold us... Can I clear up one fact before my time starts? The H O A is only owned by the church. The church's real estate is owned in an H O A with itself. There is no H O A on the three lots that they sold to us in the Concordia subdivision. So we are not part of any H O A.
Okay.
We only have our covenants. All right.
You can raise the microphone just a tad. That'd be great. Thank you.
My name is Dana Tredway. I live in the Concordia subdivision at 715 Amethyst. We live on Lot 1 and literally at the turnoff to Concordia Lane. We experience every issue of the congestion problems. On paper and to those not using Amethyst quarter daily during school sessions, I'm sure this looks like a great idea. I would ask how many in town would consider allowing their K through six child to walk anywhere near Amethyst Drive during school transportation hours or most any part of the day? I'm speaking tonight to urge you to deny a conditional use permit for a private school operating five days a week at this location. My specific concerns are, first, I'd like to know if there is a conflict of interest. The applicant, Apex Architects, is the head of the Planning Commission, and I understand he has recused himself, which is the very body deciding this permit. I also understand that in his role as applicant, he personally signed the requested waiver of the traffic study for... he personally signed the requested waiver of the traffic study for his own project. Even if he recuses himself, this creates an appearance of bias and raises legitimate questions about how staff and other commissioners felt to support the proposal. The public deserves a transparent process. Second, one of our biggest battles in town has been the STR neighborhoods. Every single argument used in STR battle apply to expanding a church into a five-day operating school in an RN1-zone neighborhood. My neighborhood deserves the protection of the code it was approved under. Third, a private school charging tuition is not the same as a church's original conditional use permit for religious services. The church's use is primarily once a week with occasional gatherings. A private school charging tuition operates as an institutional business, which is fundamentally different from weekly religious services in a quiet residential neighborhood. The narrative in the staff report addressing the approval criteria simply brushes it off, stating as there's no real impact of changing the 40-use church permit to an institutional school and adding another intersection use to an already heavily trafficked street. We have no sidewalks and a city bike path that dumps out into Concordia's parking lot that I don't believe anyone has addressed except for coming and going at school time. The staff states there are not many policies in the CAP that address the reuse of an existing building for multiple uses, but they have no problem creating a precedent through this application. In the staff's words, "The new school is comparable to the church use and similarly contextually appropriate in a low-density neighborhood." There is nothing contextually similar to a church and a private school. I highly disagree with that statement. Fourth, our neighborhood has private covenants that restrict the area to this residential use. Granting this use does not eliminate those covenants. It simply pushes the burden onto homeowners like myself and our neighbors to enforce them through costly legal action if the impacts are great. That's unfair to residents who moved into the subdivision, understanding that it would remain residential. Finally, a private school.
If you could wrap up your comments, please. Your time has expired. That was your choice. Your time has expired. Please wrap up your comments.
I just have one sentence. This location and staff's disregard for impact is not compatible with the purpose of RN1-zone, our private covenants, or the residential character of our neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments.
Thank you.
Additional public comment?
My name's Lindsay Dillenbeck, 331 Apple Drive, so just right up the street from the church. While I really respect Dana, hi. Dana and I are on a board together. It's always difficult having something move into your community. I do just want to make a couple points. I think that we mentioned one day. So my child goes to school, and hopefully this one soon. Little while. It is only four days a week because one day a week, they're going to be gone doing the field trips. And also just wanted to note that it is a nonprofit. A church is a nonprofit. It's not a for-profit business. And its connection to the church is that it's all about furthering belief in Jesus and in following Him, which is a nonprofit goal. It's not. So that's the connection to the church. So it is similar in that way that we're not there to make money. I do understand that it is a congested area. There are the paths, the walking paths that go everywhere. So I actually plan on walking with my kid. I'm really excited about it. I hope this gets passed because we would love to just walk down to school every morning. And so I just, I also want to note that this, the school's in its infancy, and it is an asset to the community, and we hope it sticks around. And it looks, I mean, it's going strong. It's got a lot of momentum. It needs a temporary home. And I know, I heard your concerns, and they really are working very hard on a permanent home, and I think are probably further along with that than Jen seemed to indicate. There was hope even for this fall, but now there's all the hope in the world for next fall. So looking with that, hoping that that will be the permanent home, I think that this asset to our community could use a leg up here for a year or maybe two. And you never know what's going to happen, but that is the intent. I'm in the position of currently joining the board, but not yet on the board. And so I'm not up to speed on everything. But so in this case, I'm just commenting as a parent that wants to support the school. I hope you consider passing it. Thanks.
Thank you for those comments. Additional public comment?
Yvonne Affeys, I live at 630 Amethyst Drive. I've lived there since 1996. And I would just like to comment that I don't know how many of you have spent time on Amethyst Drive during the high traffic hours and really understand the impact that it has and the safety issues. I think to add any more cars, any more traffic to the road is, would be a disservice to the community as a whole. It's going to all flood downstream, the corner of Third Street, Oak, and Fish Creek is already a disaster, and it's just you're forcing more traffic up that way. These are all things that need to be thought about and considered, as well as the, you know, the public portrayal coming down into Concordian Lane. These kids are flying down there on their bikes, just right out into the middle of the traffic that's going to be trying to drop off. I mean, I think it's truly going to be something that is going to need some resources to be monitored if we continue to add more traffic to Amethyst Drive. And I invite you all to spend some time there and see how far back the cars get backed up every morning and every afternoon, and then the excessive speeds throughout the day, the open campus with the high schools. So the timing issues that were stated are really, in reality, not not going to function properly. So it's something that really needs to be considered. How many of you have seen the traffic issues there?
No.
Yeah, so I mean, I think you all know. I think you know the answer. So, thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Additional public comment?
Celia Dunham. I live directly across from, with my husband Carl, from the church. We received notification in our mailbox prior to leaving for a two-week vacation, and were unaware of this proposal prior to that. This is the first opportunity we've had to provide input. We live directly across from the church. When we first moved here, it was a family-friendly residential neighborhood. The addition of new elements over time has made it harder to preserve that atmosphere. Amethyst is the main access road for three growing schools. It is also the main access road to Strawberry Park and Buffalo Pass. The specific area of the church is the crossroads for part of the city trail system, which is heavily used by both adults and children. A pathway was established to connect these trails to the Spring Creek Trailhead, which is even more heavily used. There are no other sidewalks along Amethyst. The road to the church is also the access point for the area's cluster mailboxes, which means there is traffic entering and exiting that area. In addition, an off-leash dog park was established on the trail behind our house. Our house is the only house on the same level as the trail, and we frequently have dogs entering our yard. As a side note, this area is also frequented regularly by moose and bear. They live in our yard. Amethyst is a very busy street, more so than when we first moved here. As part of the realignment of the Strawberry Park Road north of the Strawberry Park Schools, waypoint signage on Lincoln Avenue was adjusted, directing all traffic for Strawberry Park and Buffalo Pass up the Fish Creek Falls Road and onto Amethyst. There is very little monitoring of speeding and traffic on this road, especially during high school release times. People coming towards town from Strawberry Park tend to accelerate right at this point as they exit the curves. The speed limit changes at this point from 20 to 25 miles an hour. We are very supportive of the church and have always tried to be respectful of their presence in our neighborhood. However, we feel we must speak up to protect the quality of our residential neighborhood. Adding additional congestion to an already congested area just doesn't make sense. We were not asked for our input regarding the use of the church as a school prior to the development of this plan, which is concerning. We have seen a few different documents specify varying student populations. In a recent article in the paper, the director said it was open enrollment, and she didn't know how many students there would be. Letter from Pastor John Muniuli indicates it is a temporary facility, but we don't see that stipulation in the proposal itself, and that has been addressed somewhat tonight. As far as noise goes, I would just add that as a former elementary school principal at Strawberry Park, I am very aware of how much noise 40 children make, even if they're being very quiet. So there will be a noise impact. In addition, I also had to develop traffic plans for Strawberry Park Elementary, and parents do not stick to a set schedule when they're coming and going. Having my coffee in the morning, I watch that traffic. It isn't solely from 8:00 to 8:30. And I can tell you, high schoolers travel all day long on that road. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Additional public comment?
Yeah, hi, I am Matt Tredway, and 715 Amethyst. And just starting in, I respect, I respect the school. I'm a 30-year school teacher. I was a member of Concordia. I taught Sunday School there. And that I have a conflicting opinion is a little unfortunate. But I do understand this problem. And respectfully, in our estimation, you know, it's not up to the commission to solve this problem. Honestly, it's to just uphold zoning law, and we don't think that it's going to be upheld. I understand the problem. I just don't think this site is the solution. And the proposed conversion of a church into RN1 residential neighborhood into a private school undermines the integrity and intent of RN1 zoning. And we have done pretty extensive research on this just recently in terms of being a business, and most people do agree a school is a business. The city of Steamboat has consistently emphasized the importance of preserving neighborhood character and resisting incremental commercialization of these residential areas. And I can quote a few of our council members. Robin Crossan clearly articulated this concern in 2022 when discussing impact of short-term rentals. The whole point quoting her, the whole point of this is to maintain neighborhood integrity, keep our neighborhoods as neighborhoods so we don't lose Steamboat. Allowing commercial use, like a school, to operate in a conditional use permit in a strictly residential zone sets a precedent that contradicts what the city stated goals are. Pacino had a similar warning and warned against undermining long-term planning through one-off zoning exemptions. Quoting him, "That just wasn't what we signed up for in these neighborhoods." "Conditional use permits are meant to support uses that are compatible with surrounding residential, not to bypass zoning for institutional or commercial expansion." Approving in this application will chip away at residential fabric of the RN1 zones, much like Councilman Swentek warned in the zoning dispute. His quote was, "This is exactly how our zoning integrity gets chipped away. It creates long-term, a big ripple effect." So respectfully, I would implore you to look at this problem as a zoning problem only. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Additional public comment? Seeing none. Anyone online? You'll need to raise your Zoom hand. If you could wait, since I just called these people, I'll come back to you. If there's anyone online that would like to provide public comment, now is the time. Seeing none. We can return to in-person public comment.
Hi, my name's Troy Foss. Jen's, my wife, our boys go to Steamboat Christian Academy. This year, we'll have one. I'd just like to say that this school has been such a blessing for this community. The kids that are going here are thriving. And whether you're faith-based or not, I'm seeing something really impactful happening with these kids. Kids that are maybe going the wrong way are changing direction. And we're not talking about a school of like 500 kids, right? We're like 20, 30 kids, 10 cars. I don't know if you guys hike Spring Creek, but that varies by 30, 40 cars every hour. If there's a Friday night football game, there's hundreds of cars. Are we going to limit those? This is a small, I'm really disappointed that we're actually wasting our time here right now. Over 10 cars to go a few days a week. I just would hope, and we talk about neighborhoods and community, if we really want to be a community and neighbors, we're talking about like 20, 30 precious boys and girls, little kids, that just want to have an incredible opportunity to have an education and be loved. We should be pouring everything into that if we want to call ourselves a community and a neighborhood. And I just, I just hope and dream that our town can come together and really actually do that. Because there's communities that just lost 20 and 30 precious babies. And we're talking about, hey, can we help? Can we help nourish these young kids and give them an opportunity? And maybe at recess, they're laughing. I would gladly put those kids in my house if I could and let them laugh and play and learn and flourish. And so I just hope that as Steamboat, this town that I love and I pour so much into, that we would just look at this and say like, how can we just love on our kids? Because if we want to call ourselves a town, a community and a neighborhood, that's what we need to do. And this is temporary. It's not going to hurt anybody. At the end of the day, this doesn't hurt anybody. It just pours love into our kids and our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Additional public comment? Okay, we will close public comment. Would the applicant like to respond to public comment?
That's a beep. Thank you, sir. Again, thank you all for your time, neighbors. Thank you for your comments. We truly do want to be good neighbors, and so we appreciate communication, and we appreciate the ability to work together and serve our community in all of our different capacities. We all have different strengths, different missions, different plans. But I believe we all have the same goal of just really creating a wonderful, a safe community and pouring into our youth so that they can become strong, flourishing adults. Commissioners, I just want to remind you all of the numbers. Currently, we have 22 students. We're talking a maximum of 40. There are 1,600-plus students in the three neighboring schools. And so when we're looking at impact on Amethyst, I don't think our 22 students, that's not comparable. The other fact is that these are students. And so if they didn't attend Steamboat Christian Academy, I actually looked at our enrollment earlier today. Over 80% of them would be enrolled at their zone for Steamboat Springs Middle School and Strawberry Park Elementary School. So these students and these families would still be moving in that same direction every morning. If anything, we're taking a few families off the road during those peak traffic hours. So I think that's really important to remember. We have no overlap in commutes. The bike system, the bike trails, those students taking those to school. My high schooler, he will be seated in his desk. If not, he will be late and truant prior to parents coming into the parking lot. I want us to remember in this community, we have a number of private schools, preschools, and of course, our public schools that exist within our neighborhoods. It's very common for them to be in close proximity to homes, and that's what makes our community beautiful, all of the different parts, because kids are at the core of our community. Something else that's really special is we offer over 30% of our budget of our nonprofit. We're a non-for-profit entity. We do not make money. 30% of our budget goes for scholarships. We provide opportunities for students that maybe need a little bit more focused instruction, students that need a different learning model, students whose parents want a different learning model. We give them that opportunity, and so we do whatever we can to make that work. And I believe that aligns with the spirit of our wonderful town, of just giving. And I believe that aligns with the spirit of our, of our wonderful town of just giving and loving and helping youth to flourish. So thank you all again for your time and your thoughtful consideration. We greatly appreciate each and every one of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the staff have some additional information for us or responses?
I'll just mention a couple of things real quick. So thanks, everyone, for all of your, all of your comments, just regarding some use conflicts and, and the way that we mix uses. So our community plan generally has a guidance for us that we encourage a mix of uses kind of all across this community. Residential uses and school uses are very frequently mixed. This is not new planning theory. This has happened in a lot of places and in Steamboat for a very long time. It's typical that school uses don't usually get compared to commercial uses and they don't usually have too many impacts. That's, that's our experience with schools in residential areas. By locating schools in residential areas, it helps us to achieve a lot of other goals. Sustainability goals, traffic goals, transit goals, walkability, affordability, if you don't have to have a car, if you can walk to a school. So it helps us achieve a lot of things by mixing these uses together. So we've typically found them to be compatible to mixed schools in residential areas. And our plans and our codes do still maintain that this is a reasonable mix and hopefully should not detract from the neighborhood. That's definitely not our intention, but that's why we're here is to measure and talk about the impacts.
Thank you. And commissioners, any additional questions for staff or the applicant that have arisen?
I, I do. I'm glad you answered the issue about the zoning. Appreciate that. I was wondering about the comment that was made about the chair signing the waiver for the transportation study and whether that had any impact on Yehl's approval of the waiver.
When the, the person who acts as to be the chair of this commission, committee does act as an applicant, he's acting only as an applicant. So it's, it's his responsibility as an applicant for this project, as the consultant for this organization, to provide information for our, for our staff to evaluate. So it's not at all unusual that he would sign that waiver to, to ask, to ask for that waiver, to make that request. The city always has the ability to deny that request and request a traffic study. But Emmer can probably tell you a little bit more.
I'll jump in as well. Sorry. This is Jennifer Bach, Assistant City Attorney. Just wanted to jump in and looking at the ethics code, the ethics code is pretty specific. And that is that no commission member shall appear before the commission of which they are a member. So that's the kind of activity that the ethics code is concerned about. And there's also an explicit carve out in the ethics code that a, a council or board member may be a part of a firm, which does appear before its own board, but this will be deemed a conflict. And that is why Mr. Adams stepped down. So just to give you some context in the code, I, I don't have any concerns.
Thanks, Jen.
Yeah, and then also to add, when we provide justification for whether it's a traffic waiver or a drainage study waiver, we look at the, the facts and data that's provided to us, not who is submitting it. So we, we take that approach and make sure that we're looking at the information and make the correct justification for a waiver as necessary.
Thanks, Emmer.
Emmerick, before you step down, can you clarify a signature by a committee member? He, if, if there was a signature, was it the approval of the waiver or something different than that?
So, so it would have been the signature on the narrative that was provided requesting the waiver.
And so who actually approves that it's a waiver?
The engineering division, Public Works approves waivers. Did I answer your question?
Thank you.
The other question is questions from commissioners. If not, I'll close the public portion of this hearing and come back to commissioners for deliberation and a motion.
For the audience, a joke there is that my partner here always, he creates a motion before we can talk about it. So I guess I, this is out of the mic now, I guess I'll talk. I'm, there's multiple pieces here. First of all, the conditional use, I'm not, I'm also not concerned about conditional use because traditionally and within our code, our current code, conditional use of both places of worship and schools within the Arwen district is, is appropriate. Having schools in neighborhoods and having places of worship in the neighborhood. So I'm not, I'm not concerned about that. And I, and I, you know, support it, you know, for that. I am concerned about the traffic. And in terms of knowing the neighborhood, yes. I think it was seven or eight years ago, I looked at a couple of houses on Amethyst and, and really looked at the, the traffic and was concerned about the health of, you know, bringing children up on, you know, in that area. I am, you know, I am amiss in general, separate from this, that our capital improvement, you know, prioritization does not allocate money over to Amethyst. I wish they did. And I, I feel like we're coming into that conflict right now in terms of, you know, of it's a slight increase of traffic. You know, is that going to create, you know, break the camel's back? Because this is the last straw. I mean, there, there is a lot of pressure on that street. And, and basically is adding just, you know, it's a small amount enough to just put it over, over the top? I appreciate that the times that they have for the school times have been shuffled and tiered to work on the off hours, you know, of the off primary hours of, of the middle school, elementary school and, and high school. And, and, you know, I have to admit, I walked in this room really concerned about the last straw. I do appreciate the fact that we're doing a, a, you know, tiered effect of the, the traffic. And, and given that this is temporary now, temporary is probably about, you know, probably good, at least two years. I am certainly leaning towards, you know, favorability of this, this is something that is doable.
Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah. So I'm, I have some of the same comments as John that you, you have. And so I took a step back and started thinking, we, we have certain parameters that we can base our decisions on. They're in the staff report. I'll go through these. Is the, is the application compatible with the direction of policies in the community plan? Number two, is it consistent with the zone district? Number three, does it mitigate negative impacts? And I'm summarizing this. And number four, does it comply with the requirements of the CDC? So I think of number one and two. The answer is absolutely yes, in my opinion, because a single family, people want schools around their houses. And that's how the code's written. So I, I don't think there's a case for one and two, especially as the way the code is written as well. As Toby discussed earlier, it talks about uses that are complementary to and compatible with a one-family or two-family residential neighborhood. Then I go to number three. And number three is about negative impacts. And I think that's what everyone is here, what, what all the public comment was about. It's about traffic. And so then listen to Emmerick, who is our professional on staff, to talk about traffic. And talked about Amethyst itself. Amethyst hits highs and lows like any road all, all around the country. High traffic, very low traffic. We had a public comment around, it's a pathway to many areas that people go to in our wonderful city. That's a true fact. I'm looking at potential of 40, 40 students. And let's just say the number's not two and a half, let's say it's two. So then you're talking 20 cars af, slightly after the time of highest traffic. And I'm, I'm, I'm listening to what everything, everyone has said who's taken the time to come in front of the commission tonight. But also weighing that against what our traffic professional, we as a city pay a professional to advise us on that. And, and I'm coming to the fact that during these times that are strategically created, that the road can take the traffic. It's going to slightly, it could potentially slightly extend the time that Amethyst is a little bit busier. But we're not talking about a tremendous amount of cars. I then looked at actually the road into the church. You all know it. I've gone to events there at Concordia. It is a good circular route. The applicant talked about that in her presentation. That route can take a large number of cars entering, so they won't back up onto Amethyst. That's always a concern. Will cars back up in a school? I served on a commission in another city and we denied a case because there was not enough. I don't remember the correct term from traffic rotation or circulation. Thank you. Enough room for circulation. There's definitely room for circulation for a maximum of 40 students. And because of that, I'm a yes vote and allow this to move forward. I would like to, thinking about item three around negative impacts, I would like to figure out a way to potentially put a two-year restriction on this conditional use to require the applicant to come back. So if there are negative impacts, those can come forward at that time and that, then that conditional use could be reevaluated.
I want to tag on to a lot of what you just said because I agree with most of it. And I think it's good to educate what we're allowed to make decisions on. We can't just feel like this is a bad plan and say no to it. We are not legally allowed to do that. We get to answer a very specific set of questions. And two of those questions are just written in code and the answer is yes. The, the negative impact is again, why, why we're all here. And it doesn't say that projects can't create negative impacts. It says, have they mitigated any potential negative impacts? And I think that your concerns about the street are very valid. And there is a huge problem with traffic at certain times of the day. I think that that needs to be said. However, I think that this school has mitigated their contribution to that impact by staggering their start times. And because it's a very, very small amount of cars compared to the 1,600, well, small amount of students. I can't say how many cars specifically that is compared to the 1,600 students that are attending all those other schools. And the fact that most of those students would be going to another school on that route anyways, like there is very little additional impact. And what impact will be created has been mitigated in pretty powerful ways, in my opinion.
I, I think those are really good comments. The, I'd hate to see Amethyst as a collector road have 6,000 trips on it a day. Because I'm not sure what that would look at, look like. But 2,510 versus 2,500, I don't think it's going to make that much of a difference. And offsetting the, the school start times, well, some may think it's not a big impact. It is a mitigating factor without a doubt. I do believe the, the issue of two years for the, the use permit, I thought that, I thought about that for a while. But I think Jen said they had a nine-month agreement with the church. And at the end of nine months, this may change anyway. So I'm, I'm less concerned about that at, at this point in time. There was the, the issue of the, I'm still confused about the HOA. But the covenants that the HOA has, they are responsible for enforcing them. And that's the way it is across the city. We have a city where enforcement is by complaint mostly. And this isn't in line with that. So from that standpoint and the information provided by Toby on the zoning, and the fact that 80% of the students would probably go to the schools in that same area anyway, make me a supporter for the project.
Any additional comments?
Yeah. I'd like to agree primarily with what Colay said. I mean, most of that traffic is going to be there with or without the school. If they don't get this waiver, they don't have a school next year. And all those kids are going to be on the same road heading to Strawberry Park and Steamboat Middle School.
I agree with all the comments. They were thoughtful. I appreciate it. And since we've all spoken, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, can I add one comment?
Sure.
I thought around the two years is also that it allows the conditional use not to live in perpetuity. That, because this conditional use would be tied to the property in perpetuity if the, if the requirements are met. But that would, if the school is having an option to move in the next year or so, that would allow this conditional use to expire.
Any other comments?
A conditional use expires if the use terminates, doesn't it?
Does it?
If it terminates, another school could take its place in theory.
But it'd have to happen within six months, wouldn't it? Otherwise, the use is expired.
That's correct. It would have to happen pretty quickly and they would have to abide by the same conditions or operating plan and, and, you know, set of circumstance as the original conditional use permit was granted. But yes, in theory, another school could come in if they moved out.
In a period of time.
Correct.
What I heard you say, okay. Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion. I recommend Planning Commission approves PL 2025 0199, a conditional use application for an elementary secondary school in an existing Concordia Lutheran church with the following one condition.
A second.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
My vote's going to be a no, as I want the two years on the use permit.
Well, that's open for discussion. I know if I was looking for a new house or a new business, I wouldn't be, want to be tied to a certain time period to have to find the appropriate setting, which I'm sure in the environment we live in now, and any, all the time, that's a difficult proposition. So I wouldn't support any type of motion or additional condition, uh, condition of approval.
Yeah, but also if I understand it correctly, if it's not you, if they move out and it's not used in six months period, basically it goes, it goes away?
But it is possible that they could be this, that Christian Academy could be there forever.
Could become their permanent home.
With what we're approving. Does that really change the conditions and impacts that they create? Any other discussion?
I don't think that changes the impact that they're creating at this, at, with these parameters. They can't grow past 20, 40, sorry, 40 students and they have to go during these hours. As long as that's in place, I don't think that the impact changes whether it's two years or 20.
It still has to fit in the box.
Yeah, a pretty tight box.
Good point.
You know, right, right or wrong, I, I do feel that this is a symptom of a bigger problem in general on Amethyst in that we have the Hot Springs traffic all going there. We have, we have Buffalo Pass, you know, traffic all going through there. We have the school traffic going through there. It's, it's an overloaded artery and, and it needs help. And, you know, hopefully the, you know, staff and city council will, you know, bring some prioritization to giving that street and that connector some help.
If there's nothing else, I will call the question.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. No.
And that passes five to one. Can't count quickly. Thank you for your time and good luck to the applicant. And I assume Chair will be returning for agenda item number two.
Thank you.
If he hasn't fallen asleep out there.
I'll speak up now to our media team. I know the applicant is listed as Dakota Hawks. Troy Benson is joining us virtually today and will be presenting as the applicant.
Thank you, Jeremy.
So virtual tonight, Jeremy, thank you. So this is agenda item number two. Sorry, I apologize for trying to show up and get organized here again. Sorry, I apologize for trying to show up and get organized here again. Agenda Item Number Two is PL 2024-0173, CMC Monopine Tower. So yeah, we'll start with the applicant when they're ready for a presentation. Got your hand raised. Are you able to share?
Um, yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yes.
Perfect. Yes, I will share. Sorry about that. It's giving me a second longer, and I'm hoping I can figure this out.
It's trying. I think we're almost there.
Here we go.
Okay, great. Can you guys see the screen with the map on it?
We can.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Then I'll be able to show you what I would like to. So Verizon has had an existing wireless facility on the college's campus for, I think, a number of years. And in more recent years, it's become more and more difficult to use this facility to install updated equipment, mainly because the equipment is, the antennas themselves are within a faux rock enclosure. So a rock, yeah, this antenna is screened to appear as if it's just a rock, and that's a pretty limited space they have to work with. So it's limited the types of antennas they can use at this site. And that's one of the problems. On the second is that the antennas are, they work with remote radio heads that power them. And when they're within that enclosed rock, they overheat and are more susceptible to problems that way. They don't seem to function properly when they overheat. And so with these problems racking up in the site, not being able to keep up with more modern technology, Verizon is looking to install a 45-foot-tall monopine tower. So that is a tower disguised to look like an evergreen tree. I'll go down to some photo simulations we have. So this is our elevation drawing here that shows the monopine tower here. The tower itself is 45, 40 feet tall. The antennas will extend up to 41 feet above ground level, so one foot above the tower. And then to give the monopine a more tapered appearance, the branches extend five feet above the tip of the tower. So the proposals to go from this rock you can see here to the monopine. And this is a photo simulation showing the 45-foot-tall monopine looking southeast. For some reason, I think they were showing another proposed tower if another carrier wanted to use this same solution for their facility. But as for our project itself, it's just one monopine tower. This is another simulation looking at the site, looking east. See this tower here? And then another one looking northeast. This one, you can see the tower looking northwest. And then we have one last one that's more of a close-up to give you an idea of what it looks like if you were standing closer to it. In this simulation, we've used an example from an existing monopine. So this is a pretty realistic image of what would be installed. And then I'd like to show the coverage map that demonstrates the area that wouldn't be able to have the more current technology if this site isn't able to go from the boulder to the monopine. So that new technology is brought by 5G Ultra wideband antennas. So if, I don't think those antennas are compatible with the rock design where it's on the ground. With this new 5G Ultra wideband, Verizon has internal requirements that they follow to limit the maximum exposure that people who are around the antennas experience. So whereas this antenna is on the ground, those limitations are met much more easily than if the antennas are installed on a tower. So with this design that we're proposing, the antennas would be about 33 feet above the ground. So that just gives a lot more clearance, of course, than antennas that are mounted on the ground itself. So then, if you look at this coverage map here, the red area shows the space in downtown Steamboat where they would not be able to have the improved coverage that 5G Ultra wideband provides. But if Verizon's able to move forward with the 45-foot-tall monopine, this area will have that new technology. And if Verizon doesn't get approval for the tower, it opens up the need for additional sites within downtown Steamboat. So they would likely need to look for two locations, one on the west side of the ridge, and then another on the east. So this location that the site is currently at, is this in a perfect location to provide service? And if they're not able to maximize the use of this location, that just opens up the need for additional sites. And that is what I have to share.
Okay, thank you very much for your presentation. We'll let you know if we have questions.
Great.
And Jeremy, you're online as well. Do you have a staff presentation?
I am. Yeah, thank you, commissioners. So as was mentioned, this is a development plan and conditional use. There's a little bit of backstory I'll outline here at this site. As you're probably familiar, we do hear projects a lot on the CMC campus. There is a duty to consult agreement that the city has with Colorado Mountain College. And quite often, they come to you for comment. And they go to the city council for comment as well. And that's their, the extent of their obligation and a duty to consult. We determined it, the city, with the city attorney's office, because this was a, basically a private venture, Verizon Wireless, operating on the site itself, that it would need to go through our traditional development plan, public hearing processes. The decision you make tonight on this conditional use and development plan will be the final decision. So it's not necessarily just making comments for them to take away. This is a traditional conditional use. A couple of things about this project then as well. Obviously, we're in the Open Space Recreation Zone District. It is traditionally a stealth tower facility would already be a conditional use. So, and I know some of this was requested and clarified in advance of this meeting, but I'll kind of walk through it for public record. So it's understood because it's a little bit confusing. We have use standards applied to a lot of our uses. If you're a limited use or limited use with permit, you have to meet those use standards in order to basically be considered the same impacts as a use by right. If you don't meet those use standards for a limited use or limited use with permit, you end up bumping up to a conditional use review, which obviously has additional scrutiny from yourselves or all the way to city council, depending on, you know, what other types of applications might be meshed together. In this case, it is already a conditional use. We do like to look at the use standards provided in Article Three to give us guidance as to how impacts might otherwise be mitigated in limited-use zone districts. But through the conditional use process, any decision that you make tonight will vary those use standards without any sort of other variance process. So I know there was discussion, and I'll get to it here when I sort of go through the criteria for approval. We did talk a lot around the exposure on a ridgeline and how we viewed that. And that is a use standard, but would be varied effectively by your approval if you choose so to approve tonight, following staff's recommendation. With that, I'll sort of jump into the project. As mentioned, we have a 45-foot-tall stealth tower for conditional use approval as we assess the criteria for approval. We did find it compatible with our community plan, other adopted plans. There's nothing specific in those. But as mentioned, and as seen in the presentation from the applicant, we know that wireless cell service, just like many of our other water and sewer utilities, is important to our community. We want to do our best to continue to support that in reasonable ways and reasonable locations. We found it was consistent with the purpose of the zone district in that in this zone district, obviously, we have an institution. We have approved telecommunications facilities in the past. And it doesn't place any significant burden on the future use of this open space and recreation district by, you know, occupying great amounts of land or inhibiting some of the other uses. We'll get down to some of the impacts here in a second. The negative impacts, as I was just talking about, primarily exist around the visual impacts, which is why we have been working with the applicant for quite some time, all the way back into 2024, trying to work on these renderings, get different views and vantage points from what we thought was significant in town, whether you're spending time down at the library. Obviously, that's a popular spot. Or whether you're driving into or out of town and how obtrusive that might be to our view. And then we know, because it is a use standard, we tried to make an assessment as to whether or not this was an exposed ridgeline. You know, how close does it have to be to the exact ridgeline? How vegetated or unvegetated can it be? Some of these renderings help exhibit that in terms of existing vegetation and views. While we did find that it had some level of impact, it was not nonexistent overall. The benefits and the relative impact of this stealth structure, obviously, it is a stealth structure. That's better than having a wireless company put up a traditional tall tower there. And there is vegetation that exists up there. And the proposal, and one of the things we worked through with the applicant, is we do, it would not otherwise be a requirement, but we do have them putting in evergreen pine trees, and that is one condition of the approval. We had trees in there. We decided that in the interest of, you know, our winter climate, making sure that they were evergreen trees, they're not going to be enormous tomorrow. But with time, we do feel like a number of trees up in that area begins to obscure any sort of standout singular feature. So that was the approach to mitigating impacts that staff found to be relatively successful. And of course, it complies with all other requirements of our CDC broadly regarding the development plan. We do find it consistent with character. Obviously, we have telecommunications facilities there. It is a university. They've minimized the adverse impacts. Adequate vehicular access, obviously, it is accessible to maintenance and operations vehicles, but otherwise does not need parking or pedestrian access. Complies with the CDC. Therefore, in sort of whole analysis of this development, staff finds that the CMC Monopine Tower for this stealth communication facility is consistent with the criteria for approval of development plan and conditional use. And we do recommend approval with the three listed motions in your staff report. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any questions from commissioners to staff or the applicant?
Yeah, I can jump in. It's for Jeremy.
Sure.
So Jeremy, you know, this thing, if this thing gets approved, the tower's going to, you know, if there's someone's going to, you know, be complaining about, you know, hey, you have these ugly towers on a ridgeline. And so I'm trying to, and I think you struggled about, you know, what is a ridgeline? And it was an exposed ridgeline. And I have to say, from your pictures, it'd be, I'd be hard pressed to explain to somebody how that's not a ridgeline. So where I'm getting to here is really what I would have preferred this project to be identified as is basically a conditional use for the tower with a variance, because it's very clear that, you know, 304G 3.3. A tower shall not be installed on an exposed ridgeline. It's very, you know, to me, it's really clear it's an exposed ridgeline. And so I don't know how to look at that. But in terms of for transparency and what we're doing here and what we're asking here, it's, to me, it seems more appropriate to be a conditional use with a variance.
No, we don't do variances for items in Article Three. So it's not even an option. You are varying it through this process. That's what a conditional use basically says. You know, you're coming before and assessing all the implications of this application. Again, it's not, it is not strict guidance. That's sort of the free pass for a limited use, limited use with a permit. They're standards that we like to look at. But it's, it is automatically being varied. When somebody comes in for a conditional use, they would not have to follow anything in that section. The assumption would be that a conditional use is looking to vary some things. It's its own sort of special, special item. And that's how we view conditional uses. So I understand the transparency to the public might be nicer, Commissioner Augusta. And I don't disagree, but this is the process.
To help me understand that a little further, but the fact that 304G 33A says "tower shall not be installed on an exposed ridgeline", where does that fall into the project definition and approval?
So that's only relevant if this is a proposal where a stealth tower is a limited use or a limited use with a permit. That's the only time then that we hold true to this. And if somebody were in that zone district and they couldn't meet that standard, they could still basically escalate it to a conditional use, which would come before you for additional scrutiny and consideration. So we say, all right, if you can't keep it completely off of an exposed ridgeline, you need, and it was a limited use, you need to go to Planning Commission because we need to look at renderings. We need to see where it is in town. Is it, how prominent is it? How do we like the stealth feature that you're picking? Is it 20 feet tall? Is it 110 feet tall? You know, there's a lot more to be considered. And so that's, at this point, we're saying, we've done that. We've considered all of the extenuating elements and believe that, yes, while that's a standard that gives you a free pass, in this case, it's not something that necessarily has to be met to a T. It can be varied in this instance.
Other questions? Yeah.
Yeah, two questions. One for Jeremy, pretty basic. It was mentioned on the renderings, there is a Um, it was mentioned on the renderings, there is a, another mono, we learned a new word, by the way, monopine. There's another monopine tree, um, shown on the renderings. That does not exist today, uh, as, as my eyes see it. Um, can you, is that correct? And is there, are there any approved plans, um, for that today?
There are no approved plans for it. You're correct, it does not exist. It is not being proposed through this conditional use either. Um, it simply renderings that weren't revised to be, um, commensurate with the proposed plans.
Got it, great, thanks Jeremy.
If one were to be added, sorry to add, add on. If one were to be added in the future, it would have to go through this exact same process again. There's no free pass.
Got it, thank you. And then for the applicant, uh, one, I appreciate you working with the city on adding, adding vegetation and trees around the site as depicted on A dash one dot one. Do you, can you commit to, or do you know what height those evergreens will be at planting?
Um, at planting, I'm not sure, um, we, we didn't specify that, but I am working on another project where we are looking at planting them at a minimum height of eight feet. So tha- that could also be met for this project.
Okay, would you be comfortable if that was a criteria of approval that the minimum height is eight feet?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Are the renderings showing the, the proposed landscaping that you're adding?
They are not.
Yeah, I believe the, the trees maybe down the road, um, might have a maximum height close to, uh, thirty, thirty-five feet, but I think we were just trying to, um, they, they would probably mainly cover the base of the tower and there still would be that, um, tip section of the tower that would be viewed from most points.
What's the lifespan on one of these monopines?
Um, Verizon prefers to sign a twenty-five year lease agreement. They currently have a lease with the college. I'm not sure how much longer they have on that lease, but, um, towers are a pretty significant investment for Verizon, so they like to get as much use out of them as they can. And this is a very good location for a site to be, so I, I wouldn't, I, I would think Verizon would want this to be there as long as possible.
Can you just give us an idea of what that means? Like, technology just seems to be growing so rapidly. I don't know if as long as possible is five years or if that's thirty years.
Oh, I, I would say thirty years plus, for sure. Yeah, technology is changing, but I don't think towers are going anywhere. Um, Verizon is still building them like crazy to keep up with, uh, wireless demands. Every year, there's additional traffic hitting these sites. And so that, there's no slowing down as of now or, or, um, minimize need for these towers that are pretty essential infrastructure.
But can I, can I build off your question? But I guess the, the thing is, is, I mean, so was the faux boulder until now this has become outdated. And so as you see, you know, the need for towers and the need for communication devices, but do you see an evolution of types of antenna towers that would make this less permanent as you see things changing in the future? I know that's a big speculation, but, but you're more in the industry.
Yeah, so towers, like, like they're called cell towers for a reason, they're actual towers. So sites like this where they're ground mounted are extremely rare and they are, I think, only used predominantly as a last resort. Um, both because there's the RF emissions problem and then there's the line of sight problem. Um, when you use a tower, you, you're, you're further from the ground and you can get a lot better line of sight. And then again, the, the rock design, I, I think has been limited since the day this site was installed. Um, it, it kind of limits the height and width of antennas that can be used and the configuration. Um, there are optimal configurations for antennas. And when you're on a tower, it opens up a lot more, um, options than when you're in a real confined space like within a boulder.
That, that mostly helps. My question had more to deal with, you know, wait for six G to come out and seven G and it's easy to be dramatic.
Right, right.
As things change, you're, you're, go ahead.
As the direction, um, that it, it's been going for the last, uh, three, I don't know how many decades, you know, I don't think antennas are going anywhere. I think they're, they're, that's is the, that's is the way service is provided. And I don't see that changing anytime soon unless satellites, um, really take off. But, I mean, all the carriers would have to restart and everyone's still aggressively building out their infrastructure. And so the, uh, the, the main benefit of switching, well, one of the great benefits, switching from the ground mounted site to a tower is it opens up an options for future modifications. So as long as antennas are the source of the service, the tower will be able to keep up with changing technology.
That, that's what I needed to know, thank you. Other questions?
You mentioned that, that towers are often the last resort.
No, 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 ground, ground mounted antennas are a last resort.
Were there studies done, like, did you consider any other possible options? Like the roof of CMC or, or is this site, because of the existing infrastructure, the only spot that was even explored as a possible new antenna site?
So it's such an effective, uh, spot where this boulder is located. If we were to shift the site, um, back, so it's closer to the building or mounted on the building, then the effectiveness, effectiveness of the site would deteriorate a little bit. It wouldn't be near as effective as where it's currently proposed to be located.
Other questions?
Mr. Chair, could I, uh, respond to Commissioner Augusta's earlier question?
Absolutely.
Just wanted to.
Yeah, I could.
Tag on to some comments that Jeremy made. So just to be clear, because I just, it, it sounds like there's a little bit of confusion, but, um, so in Article Three of the CDC includes the use definitions and standards specific to particular uses. Those use, um, standards are applied to specific uses through the limited use process and the conditional use process. So those standards do apply, however, um, section, uh, three hundred point F two states that, um, use standards may be varied through the conditional use process. So as Jeremy was trying to explain or did, I'm sorry, did explain, um, this is the appropriate process. There doesn't, we don't need to go, it, it's not a variance application and we don't apply the variance criteria when we modify or vary use standards. That is, that happens through this conditional use process.
Okay, we may have to take this off the line, but just for understanding, because it, you know, I'm, I'm, it's not clear about that it, you know, the three oh four G basically, you know, states that the, that the towers shall not be installed in an exposed ridge line. But you're saying that that is, does not apply to conditional uses?
No, it does apply, so the standards apply. However, the applicant has the ability to request modification or waiver or variance to those standards. And you, as a planning commission, through the conditional use process, have the authority to modify, waive or vary those standards.
Okay.
And you do that using the criteria for approval of a conditional use rather than the variance criteria.
Okay.
Other questions?
So I have a, I have a question, um, about, uh, about, about the visual impacts still. So, you know, so going back to the visual impacts, you know, areas associated. So I, you looked at the site and basically, you know, you, you, you walk out to those rocks and, and then it's a pretty quick drop off that ridge line. If the cell towers were actually just placed, you know, ten feet away from that ridge line, twenty feet, you know, into that ridge line, it would be, it would be, you know, shrunk in terms of visibility quite a bit, pretty quickly. So is there a reason in, in terms of, I guess there's, you know, maybe this is for the applicant, their, you know, the performance, you know, still using a, you know, monopine tower, but basically, you know, take it off the ridge line and let it drop down that ridge line slightly and that would make it less visible. Is there a reason we aren't doing that?
Um, so I think as the, uh, towers currently proposed, it's about forty-five feet from the edge of the ridge line. Um, so I think it just comes to line of sight, the further back we go, the better, the worse the line of sight is. So you're just kind of playing with the effectiveness of the site. The more you push, push it back north and further from the drop off point of the ridge line per se.
Yeah, I'm trying to visualize, I'm just like, because you're talking about moving it, if you move it back on, you know, basically, there's, there's a, there's a, um, uh, open flat area up there, which is all the other out, you know, the, all the other electronics are housed. But is there, you know, but if you, but if you go in the, I don't know what nor, what direction that would be, but basically you end up dropping down the, the ridge line pretty quick. And so what I'm trying to do is basically hide that tower a little bit more. Is there a way to do that? And what's it, what's it, what's the impact of the performance? Essentially, it's, you could say it's, it's a shorter tower or you could say the tower is the same height, but it's, you know, it's pushed away from the ridge line and, and down that ridge.
Right, and so, and with that, with that change, the further you push it back and deeper into the property, the further you're pushing, you're, the further you're pushing it away from the most effective location for the site.
John, are you asking about going down the hill?
Yeah, down the hill.
The red light?
Yeah, down the hill.
He's talking about, why wouldn't you be able to push it south further, not north?
Oh, okay, south, I, I don't, I don't think we're playing with much space when, when we go south.
Any other questions? No, I'll go to public comment real quick. Is there any public comments on this agenda item? So you can come down to the podium? No, sir, not seeing any online. Then first I'll give, uh, try, I'll give you an opportunity, applicant, uh, final response or comments? Do you have any?
Yeah, I would say we, we worked on this site plan with the university. So I think if we were to go south, that would be closer to where, um, the boulder is currently located. And I think for a, a number of reasons, that just wasn't a preferred location for the university or Verizon. It, it's just not as good for construction. Um, so with, working with the university, this is where we landed on. So if we were to try and shift the location, um, I think we're, we're kind of backpedaling and we'd have to go back to the university and, and point out that, um, we have to shift it to a location less suitable for, for this area and the university. But yeah, that's all I have to add.
Great, thank you. And, and anything from you, Jeremy?
Uh, no additional comments from staff.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any final comment, uh, questions?
Uh, there's not, you said it was, was a landscaping plan here, so what, but what exact, is, is there a definition of? I think one, I think, I think I, there was a, well, once you, what, can you review the landscape plan with us? Let me just say that.
So if I can speak up, the current landscaping plan is three new trees and seven shrubs. Or let me, let me double check that.
And that's as shown on A dash one dot one, correct?
Yes, yep, three, three evergreen trees and seven shrubs. That's the correct, correct count.
It's on the enlarged proposed site plan. Okay, any other final questions?
Yeah, is now the best time to address adding the eight foot minimum on the trees that they're going to plant?
Uh, I mean, I think you have already asked the applicant who's been amenable to it. Um, as far as our discussion about adding it, I think that would happen during discussion. Asking staff, my point there with Jeremy's up there, uh, if they would think that they needed to review or change anything might be appropriate, but that might be all that's left during this part.
Does staff find that as an appropriate condition of approval?
Yeah, I think that's certainly an acceptable, uh, condition of approval and it would, you could even just, rather than add a fourth condition, you could probably amend that third condition. In this case is, you know, Toby commented, commented earlier, we like to make sure we're tying them to criteria for approval. I think mitigating the effects, um, that can be directly applied. So I do think it's appropriate. And if, if the applicant's agreeable, then.
Okay, great. I, I think that should solve everything up to our discussion purposes, if that works.
Yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other final questions? And I'll call, oh yeah, please.
It'll be part of it, but that discussion of a changed condition of approval will be part of a motion, is that correct?
That's what I mean, yes. And that needs to happen next.
Okay, just checking.
For whatever, I was tripping through that, yes. Any other questions? Okay, closing the public portion of this agenda item and coming to commissioners for discussion and a motion, please.
I honestly, um, there was a boulder, now there's a tree. Uh, how much it looks like a tree? Well, on the picture, it looks like a tree. Uh, I'm, so I'll, I'll go with the fact that it looks like a tree and it's going to look like a tree. And there may be two trees, it could be twin vines, we don't know. Um, with the other facility, whatever it is.
I see.
Um, so I, I mean, I have no, no problem with this. Um, the fact that it's on CMC's property and we're talking to these guys separately, I assume CMC has been involved and they said, sure, this is okay. Although I don't see anything that indicates there's an agreement between CMC and, but that's not up to us. So from that standpoint, I'm supportive of it.
I, I agree with Lou and, uh, you know, I'd like to say that they have gotten a lot better over the years of making these look like actual trees. They're pretty hard to spot sometimes now.
Yeah, and, and I concur, um, and I'm happy about the other trees. I wish they could put up a forty foot tree, but it's cost prohibitive, it really is. Um, and, and, you know, I look back, cell coverage is a problem here. This is starting to help that and there may be more coming as it looked with the red X. Um, and I would say, remember cell coverage here, our representative Lukens pushed a bill through this year to increase cell coverage across the state, and this is part of that.
I wish we had like a model number or something for the monopines, so we knew exactly what it looked like, because they, some of them do stick out like sore thumbs. And if one model does and one model doesn't, I mean, I'm sure they have model numbers, right? Like, I wish we had some assurance that it was going to be one of the new, modern, better looking ones, because the bad ones are really bad. And the, I mean, that, that boulder sticks out, in my opinion. So having this giant pine, I was surprised to see the other trees in, which I'm just assuming this is dead accurate, that these images are showing these other two trees that just also stick out like a sore thumb. So I don't know, I, I'm not totally convinced that it mitigates the, the visual impact of this monopine, but it might be.
More trees planted in groupings, is that what you?
Gosh, I don't know.
Need like a landscape standard for that.
Yeah.
You have a, you have a forty-five foot tower and an eight foot tree.
Yeah, it's going to take a lot of years for these trees to actually help.
It's, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
I think about the context, oh, sorry, where you were going to go.
I was just going to follow up on that, it'd be interesting for staff with, we, since we have renderings of what this monopine is supposed to look like, if it were to differ it, if it were to change from that to some degree, is, would that fall under the heading of non-compliance? I mean, or will any green artificial structure meet the, what we're approving?
It's a good question. I, I mean, we don't have, I don't think a measurable way to say that they're not meeting it. Obviously, in this, you know, application, it talks about the, the height and shape of the structure. And we have renderings. I would defer to Rebecca, she has some means of enforcement that I'm less aware of.
Yeah, I would say we will, there will be, um, permits required for this. We will review those permit. Yeah, I would say we will, there will be um permits required for this, we will review those permit applications for consistency and compliance with this development plan approval, so I would not say any green structure would do. But, you know, I, I know we're all hoping this looks nice and doesn't stick out, so I, I don't want to suggest that it. I don't know how to quantify that for you all, but we will see a permit application, we'll, we're gonna know what we're gonna get before it goes up. And if it's drastically different than what's been represented here tonight, I think we have some leverage and some authority to require reconsideration or revision of that permit.
It's a good point, thanks Rebecca.
Any other discussion?
I would just say, I'm not a hundred percent on the eight foot minimum, I'm thinking of the difficulty of installing a larger tree in that area. And are we actually creating more of an intrusion to the skyline? And it's eight, I don't know what the, what was the, proposed is six foot tree or four foot trees?
It's not listed. It's not listed, what they.
It's not listed, it's four trees, that'll grow to whatever.
What's worth, eight foot and ten foot tall trees are pretty standard requirements for landscaping, whether in HOA or, or even, I think, our city guidelines. So that's not outside of keeping with kind of a basic standard, that's not a little two foot. Italy thing, it's a little bit more established, but anything more than that is creating a bulb that can't be moved very well, you know, there's, there's kind of a problem there, the eight to ten is kind of the sweet spot for a new tree that is on its way.
Okay, I appreciate that.
There's no irrigation of these trees, right?
Well, there is a time period that they have to survive, that the applicant, that can still have to maintain it for some period of time.
Always, because it's listed in the proposal.
Always?
Oh, yeah, the, the landscape plan continues. And just cut down trees later after you tell us you're gonna put them in, kind of thing.
Yeah, great, I appreciate it.
I, I've just been thinking about it more from a contextual way of, of just kind of, yes, we don't want to create eyesores, I'm a hundred percent agreeing with the, the minimum concern that we're talking about, but also understanding that our utilities are ugly in general, and thank God it's not more of that hundred and twenty foot tall, uh, you know, power line that's going through our town. And other people could say that the green, uh, you know, YVA transformers are ugly, and of course, all the overhead power lines are ugly, and our utilities are ugly. This is a step in the right direction while still providing much-needed utilities. And we've got some, some base level safeties with kind of what, how Rebecca answered your question, which I think was great. Uh, and so I don't see any, any reason to not support it based on alleviating that concern.
The struggle I, the struggle I have does go back to this, you know, the seven oh seven C three is, is visual impacts, and then I, I have to tie that back to the three oh four G three, three, three A of that, you know, we put that in there for a reason. Towers shall not be installed on exposed ridge line, and we're, we're kind of, it was put there for a reason, the intent of the community was they didn't want towers on the ridge lines invisible. That's where I'm, that's one area where I'm struggling with. Not recognizing that we need the infrastructure and there's a lot of really ugly stuff going through our town, like those, like the, the electrical towers, I mean, electrical lines. So this is, compared to that, way better.
And I think of that, I'm glad it says that, which is requiring them to come forward to get a conditional use.
I think it was a conditional use anyways. I actually think that stealth facility is conditional use in every zone district, which is curious that there's a list of use standards that, I mean, I guess we're just always in the spot we are now, but if they have to change something.
I mean, the bottom line is, they're trying to make it look like a tree. I mean, it, it, it doesn't look like a tower, because it's supposed to look like a tree, whether it does or doesn't, may depend on the model, I have no idea. But that's their objective, that's what they're showing.
Does anybody want to make a motion? Make a motion. Motion to approve PL two zero two four zero one seven three, as recommended by staff, with an adjustment to item three. Native plant material identified on sheet A dash one dot one to be evergreen, with a minimum eight foot height at planting for the three trees.
Second.
Give a motion in a second, um, I, I'll jump in real quick with final discussion to say that we, um, we heard kind of a request from staff to kind of quantify why we might be adding to a condition of approval, and I would say that requiring a, a minimum height helps mitigate the added height that is being conditionally revised. And so I think it's pretty obvious, uh, reasoning as to why you're, you're requesting that.
Thank you, Chair.
Uh, any other final discussion?
I appreciated your point about context, that utilities aren't typically very pretty.
We're trying, but we're trying.
But we're trying, and so it is mitigating the impacts of just a straight-up tower, so. Context is important.
Uh, then I will call for a vote.
I, I still struggle with the visual impacts, um, I, I think they could have done more, but I will say yes.
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 Right?
Yes. Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Uh, thank you for your time tonight, Troy and Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you.
We're, we're at seven oh seven, um, everybody want to take a quick five-minute break? All right.
Sure.
Great, we'll be back in a few.
The site was originally developed as a parking lot for Yampa Valley Electric Association when their headquarters were across the street. After the YVEA building was redeveloped in 2016, that parking lot was made available to the public by the private property owner. This lot is currently used for general parking in, and is not part of any required business or residential parking. Uh, the zone map amendment would change, um, the property. The zone map to change the property was approved in 2019, and as Eric mentioned, the development plan for the hotel was approved in 2021. This will change it back to CY two, and the property will remain in Zone A, the green zone of the short-term rental overlay zone. This application is being processed concurrently with the development plan, however, as was mentioned, a zone map amendment can stand on its own. So any allowable CY two development could happen on this property in the future. The amendment is consistent with the purpose of CY two, which is a mixed-use gender district intended to provide development along Yampa Street that's complementary, but distinct from commercial Old Town. The intensity of development permitted in CY two should be compatible with the surrounding CO and CY lots. Uh, changing this zoning from a PUD for a specific project to CY two will support a variety of land uses that could be consistent with the character of the area, and the change will result in a logical and orderly pattern. CY two is more consistent with the future land use plan, the downtown plan in the surrounding area, and a standard district is more predictable for the neighbors and the community. Um, so we do recommend approval of this project as listed.
Thank you very much. Any questions from commissioners? Nope, me either, so we'll skip that. Uh, is there any public comments on this agenda item? So you can come on down, give us your name and address? Nope, uh, seeing none online either, we will, uh, close public comment. Uh, assuming that the applicant doesn't have anything more they wish to add? Okay, or staff?
No.
And one final chance for questions. Then I'll close our public portion, come to us commissioners for discussion and a motion.
Second.
Great, we have a motion in a second, any other discussion? It does seem awfully straightforward, that's what CY two was developed for, and that's where it's being proposed.
It's scary to go back to something.
Oh, man.
Inconsistent.
It's scary to think of what would get developed under this PUD.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So dense.
Yeah. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 And that motion passes unanimously. We'll jump into agenda item four then, uh, this is BL twenty twenty five zero zero two zero, Tenth and Yampa Row Homes Development Plan. Is the applicant here for a presentation?
Uh, good evening again, Eric Smith for the applicant. Just by way of introduction, the applicant is Scott Lindmar, they're here, and Kate Leggett is here from ESA as well, in the front row to answer any questions. Um, I'll go through just a very brief presentation, just to sort of outline what we're proposing to do on this application, then I'll answer any questions. Uh, Toby, if you want to sort of move the slides for me, I don't think this thing's working. Uh, the site is located downtown, as Toby said, on the vacant parking lot. And it sits on the corner of Tenth and Yampa. This is the ground-level site plan, basically what we're proposing are five residential units and six commercial condominium units for a total of eleven units on site. Each of the residential units has an attached garage, and then there's additional parking for the commercial located on the corner of the site at the alley on Tenth Street. We're also eliminating the access point that currently comes in from Tenth Street onto the existing parking lot, and then replacing that with parking along the public right-of-way on Tenth Streets, we gain a parking space back there, two parking spaces back there. Basically, the commercial areas front along Yampa Street, and then as well, another space that fronts along Tenth Street on the side. And then the residential units occur behind and above that commercial space. And as I say, there are attached garages for the residential along the alley that are accessed from the alley, and they step back from the alley, and I can talk about that when we get into a couple of perspectives in terms of why we've laid it out this way. Basically, the setback along the interior proper line is, uh, for all intents and purposes, on the property line, we are set back ten feet to the setback on the front, we're set ten foot back, which is the setback on Tenth Street as well. There are a couple of areas where we're recessed in, and you can see, in fact, actually flip back one if you would please, Toby. One of the variances addresses the front setback, because there's a requirement that we build to that front setback, which is ten feet. There's another requirement in the code that talks about modulation of the building frontage, so we have built to the ten foot along the front, but the entries, we've recessed back in a little bit to create that modulation and the exterior elevation, as opposed to having a hundred-plus feet of frontage that's pulled right out to the ten-foot setback. We've done the same thing along Tenth Street, where there's some slight variations in the elevation frontage, just to create the articulation that we're looking for in the massing. Next slide. This is just sort of an enlarged plan that shows the proposed landscaping, again, you'll see the front of the building on Yampa Street stays pretty much on the setback as we do on Tenth Street. We've got trash storage back in. We've got trash storage back in the back here in an interior contained area, as well as utilities and meters enclosed there. And then there are courtyards in the center section of the property which separate the garage from the residential units. And again, commercial all along Yampa Street and turning the corner on 10th Street. Next. This is just a landscape plan that shows the proposed landscaping along both 10th and Yampa with street trees that follow the city's guidelines for landscaping in those areas. This is just a series of floor plans. This is the ground level, again, showing the commercial and the residential behind. And next slide is the next level up. That's the second floor, which basically is residential all the way across for the five units without space over this corner. We're trying to hold this corner down in terms of elevation, just in terms of the visual views from 10th and the alley. Next slide. And that is the top living room floor. And again, we've dropped, the bedrooms that are located here drop off on that level because we're trying to step this building up so that it modulates down to the alley. Also trying to keep the alley open in terms of solar access to be able to get sun in there. Basically, what we're seeing on the plan is sort of an orientation. This is northeast up and southwest down. So afternoon sun, by holding this back, allows afternoon sun to get into this alley area, which we think is important. Next slide. We have a small rooftop area. We've got a stairway that goes up to the rooftop and an elevator, and then a small rooftop deck that's developed off each of those units up there. This is a view from Yampa Street, looking back to the west, if you will. This is 10th Street on the side, so it shows the commercial frontage along Yampa and along 10th Street. It also shows the fact that we're sort of stepping back on the alley exposure here to provide some modulation in the building. These entries that I mentioned earlier are located here. They are stepped back about four feet from the 10-foot setback of the facade just to create some articulation on that entry form. Next slide. This is a slide looking from the alley. You can see there's nothing above the garage here. So essentially, this corner at the alley on 10th is one-story. Then we step to two stories back here, and then up to three stories on the section that's pushed further away from the alley. We've held the faces of these garages back about 25 foot from the property line in the alley. Technically, under the CY Zone District, we're supposed to be at the alley or touching the setback along here, which is zero. But we felt like holding these garages back gives the opportunity for people to access in and out of those garages and be able to see up and down the alley, as opposed to being able to, you know, having a situation where they're backed blindly into the alley and potentially impact oncoming cars. It also allows us to provide the solar access to the alley by stepping this back on that side. Next. This is just sort of an aerial view, looking down, where you can just see, obviously, nobody really views it from this point, but you can see how this corner is stepped to the one-story, and then we're stepped back after one-story on both 10th Street as well as Yampa Street. Next. This is taken, obviously, looking east, if you will, on Yampa Street. The seafood company sits over to the left here. This property line sits essentially on the property line, and you can see the commercial along Yampa and then the residential above here. Next. This is just a pure elevation, looking straight at the front. You can see all of this frontage is commercial, with the exception of the common entries. There's an entry for two units here. There's an entry here, and there's an entry for these two units down at this end. But essentially, everything on the ground level there is commercial. Everything on the next two levels above is residential. Next. And this elevation is 10th Street, which again shows the step in the corner there. The property line sits about here. So this gives us good solar access to the alley by stepping this back. I feel like it opens up sort of the views as you step down 10th Street, as opposed to going up three stories here. Our allowable height is 38 feet in this zone district, and we're below 38 feet everywhere, so there's no variance being requested on building height. Next. This elevation is strictly from the alley, shows the garage at unit one, and then the garages for unit two, three, four, and five. This, these four pods are bedrooms over the garage for the four units on the end. There's no construction essentially over the garage on unit one closest to 10th Street. Next. And this is the west elevation, which essentially, the only windows are in the stair tower up here. The rest of this, because of the setback to the property line, we can't have any windows by building code within five foot of the property line. And the building sits essentially on the property line in that west elevation. So we've modulated that building in terms of some of the materials and stepped this in. There's a courtyard here that opens up in between the garage and the unit that allows some light and ventilation in that area. And I think that's it. Next slide, Toby. Oh, this is a section showing through here. It shows the line here, which is our 38-foot height limitation, which shows all three stories. There's a taller ceiling in the commercial, which is required by code on the Yampa Street side. And this is a section that's cut through the courtyard, just shows that opening in the courtyard between the garages and the bedroom above and that courtyard space. And again, this line you see at the top is a 38-foot line. That's our allowable building height in that zone district. And these are the proposed materials, basically a mixture of stone and steel and wood siding, along with the proposed railing system, and shows sort of a palette of the colors. The slide in the center here is really the storefront system that will be employed at the front of the commercial spaces. And that's it. I'll answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much. Toby, do you have a presentation as well?
Sure. Toby Stoffer, Senior Planner. So this request is a mixed-use development for five row homes, six commercial spaces with major variances, and a conditional use at 10th and Yampa Street. Again, it's on the corner of 10th and Yampa, slopes down to the Yampa River. Future zoning, proposed zoning is CY2, so this project has been evaluated for the CY2 Zone District. Again, it was developed as a parking lot for the Yampa Valley Electric Association, and that lot is currently used for general parking. It is not required for any business or residential parking. The mixed-use development will have five residential uses, six commercial spaces, private garage access from the alley, and each residence and commercial unit will have primary entrances on Yampa Street. The project will improve and develop 10th Street and Yampa Street with sidewalks, street trees, lighting, and benches consistent with the downtown design guidelines, and add two new parking spaces. There are six variances, two sections 219 and 443, for building placement, massing, and transparency. The conditional use approval is required for the multifamily residential use in the pedestrian-active building frontage, as that is a use standard. When looking at the multifamily residential use, it is allowed as a limited use in the CY Zone District. However, because the use is located in the pedestrian-active building frontage, which is a use standard, it does require conditional use to assess the negative impacts. The purpose of this standard is to keep pedestrian activity in commercial areas and hopefully achieve some vibrancy and mass for a successful district. Residential uses can detract from activity and vibrancy, and they can sometimes appear as dead space when commercial spaces are active. This proposal does include residential space along 10th Street, though the majority of the building is proposed for commercial, and the design seems to mitigate some impacts of this residential use. We do think that this project is consistent with the community plan and the downtown plan. It does include variances to standards that we'll get through. Even though there are several variances, we do think that the building form and design should be compatible with the current and future buildings in downtown, and we support the variances, finding the plan to be consistent with the future land use goals for the area and the variance standards for most all variances, providing an acceptable alternative. A few of the downtown and community plan goals that this plan is, that this project is consistent with. The downtown plan calls for us to improve the comfort and safety for pedestrians and the experience of parking in downtown. The community plan would like us to integrate a mix of complementary uses, redevelop core areas like Old Town, and connect streets and sidewalks for walkability between commercial, residential, and natural areas. And a housing plan in our community goal is to integrate housing into mixed-use areas. And a transportation plan is to encourage mixed-use development on vacant infill lots. The CY Zone District is intended to support a moderate-intensity commercial use while allowing residential uses that complement the active streetscape. The street-level residential use should complement this streetscape through its building design and the large storefront windows in the residential portion of the building. Those are similar to the ones in the commercial section of the building. The streetscape improvements along 10th Street should enhance the pedestrian connections to Lincoln Avenue and the Yampa River, and parking for the commercial and residential uses will be on the alley, which is where we would typically expect those uses. So we don't anticipate that there will be a negative impact from those. We also don't think that the use should have a negative impact on the surrounding properties of the community. There are several other mixed-use properties in the area, and the building design and commercial space for the majority of the 10th Street frontage, as well as the enhancements to the 10th Street landscape, should mitigate that impact. Regarding the development plan, we do think that the proposed development is consistent with the character of the Yampa Street area, and improvements to the streetscape contribute to the public realm and align with our community plan and downtown goals for enhanced pedestrian spaces. This property shouldn't negatively impact the environment. It will comply with all city standards to minimize impacts for air and water quality, and elimination of the parking should also be an improvement to the natural environment and the runoff in that area. We do find that this plan meets all applicable standards for access, parking, and refuse management. Each residential unit meets parking standards of Article 3 and Section 406, with two garage spaces and one driveway space for each residential unit. The commercial spaces will have three dedicated surface spaces on the alley, which meet those requirements. The access to the parking lot will be closed, and so this development will create two on-street public spaces. And trash and recycling for the commercial spaces is provided in the integrated trash enclosure on the site. So we do have some public comment that we received today. I'll start to discuss the variances, but I did want to make one correction to that public comment that we received. That comment indicated that variances need to meet four criteria for approval, and they actually need to meet three. The third criteria for approval is either to have an unnecessary hardship or an acceptable alternative. So each variance does need to meet three criteria, and you can meet either an unnecessary hardship or an alternative, an acceptable alternative. So there's two paths to that third criteria. So as I go through the variances, I'll try and touch on the acceptable alternatives that each of these variances meet. So the first variance is for a building setback of 25 feet from the front property line. That's for the upper stories of the building. So above a height of 28 feet, the building shall be set back 25 feet. So this building will set their building back 20 feet instead of 25. However, they will start that setback at a building height of 20 feet. So there will be less building at a closer range to the street on 10th Street. We find that the variance shouldn't create significant impacts to the adjacent conforming uses. The building has been scaled down and stepped back to reduce this impact of the building at the pedestrian level, so it should be compatible with nearby buildings that are similar in scale. The building form does support the mixed-use concept for the property, which is consistent with the goals and policies of the downtown plan and the community plan. Both those plans encourage street-level vibrancy and improvement to the pedestrian experience. The building and site design supports those goals in part by stepping, starting the step back at a lower height to consider the pedestrian scale on 10th Street. The purpose of the 25-foot building setback is to keep the building placement and massing in scale with pedestrian activity with what we expect in downtown. The building steps back 20 feet, and the step back begins at 20 feet in height. This reduces the scale and massing in a different way than our standard applies. So we find that this approach meets alternative two. The purpose of the code standard is achieved without strict application in this circumstance. The design also allows the building to meet other standards, including the 10-foot front setback and design standards in 443 for building scale and variation. For request two, the standard is that a porch or deck shall be set back a minimum of five feet from a side lot line. On the west side of this property, the decks are proposed at zero feet from the lot line to be consistent with the rest of the building. There is a zero-foot allowable minimum setback for buildings in this district to allow an urban character, similar to what we have on Lincoln Avenue. While the deck could provide building articulation, setting the deck back from the property seems inconsistent with the intention to bring buildings to the property line. As other nearby buildings have been developed with zero-foot setback decks, we don't think that this should be an impact, and it should be compatible with existing and proposed buildings in the area. The purpose of the deck setback could be to encourage building articulation and variation, as opposed to a solidly, a solid wall or blank wall on the side of the building. This zero-foot deck does allow the building to meet the zero-foot side setback standard and create some articulation and variation. And we find that that is an acceptable alternative to the standard. The third variance is the front building facade setback along Yampa Street. So the standard is the front building facade shall be built to the minimum front setback, which is 10 feet. As was mentioned, on Yampa Street, the building includes some entryway alcoves that are set back more than 10 feet. Again, we think that this variance is consistent with other buildings in downtown. There are some buildings that are built to the full width of the front setback, and there are others that include alcoves or entryways. So this building design should be compatible with other current and existing, or current and future uses in the area. The building form, again, supports the mixed-use concept for the building, for the property, and that supports the downtown and community plan goals. Again, those plans support a mix of uses, infill on vacant lots, comfort and safety of pedestrians, and consistency with Old Town character, where some facade variability is not uncommon. The purpose of having this front building facade at the full width is to promote a compact pattern of development that promotes pedestrian activity, establish a pedestrian-friendly scale at the street level, and continue the use and activity and porches of porches and stoops that are typical of residential entries in traditional neighborhoods, and also maintain a consistent scale and sense of orientation. So we find that this variation in entryways is consistent with the purposes of the standard and the guidelines of the project and the design, provides an acceptable alternative that achieves the purpose of the standard without strict application in this circumstance. The fourth variance is the full width of the front building's facade shall be to the minimum front setback, this time on 10th Street. So again, the 10th Street side of this building includes some variations that are not, that are set back more than 10 feet. Again, many buildings in downtown include some variation on the front facade, particularly on the numbered streets. There is more variability in how the buildings interact with those streets. And the buildings on 10th Street in particular do not quite, do not have the full facade at the front setback, so it would be very consistent with those other buildings in the area. As we've noted, the purpose of this building, front building facade setback, is to promote the compact pattern of development and pedestrian-friendly scale at the street level. This building variation along 10th Street does provide an acceptable alternative and meets the purposes without strict application in this circumstance. Request five is for the 10th Street side to fill the full width of the lot. So the building needs to fill the full width. The building on the 10th Street side occupies about 82% of the lot width. The parking and the driveways occupy 18% of the width adjacent to the alley. Parking and access are expected and typical in an alley, and there are other properties in downtown, especially those on numbered streets that have a similar layout. This building occupies the majority of the lot outside of the required setbacks and parking on the driveway. And we feel that the parking and driveways on the alley should be compatible with other buildings and uses in the area. The purpose of this standard, again, is to ensure the scale and massing of this development is complementary to the surrounding scale and the proportions of adjacent structures. This design does allow the building to transition to the nearby buildings of a lesser height across the alley and across 10th Street. And we find that the purpose meets the standard without strict application in this circumstance. Also, the layout provides the project to meet street parking standards and clear vision standards by providing space for pedestrians and vehicles. So it does help the project to meet other standards. The sixth and last variance is for transparency. There's a minimum of 25% of the wall area for upper-floor building facades that's required in this area. The west facade upper floors provide 7% transparency, and the north facade, that's The west facade upper floors provide 7% transparency, and the north facade that's on the alley provide 22.8% transparency. The upper stories of the residential uses on the alley and the rear side of the building facades frequently have less transparency than front facades. Other downtown buildings may have similar circumstances to this one. Both the west and north upper floors integrate transparency and visual interest to mitigate the impacts of these requests, and we feel that these, the transparency provided should allow this building to be compatible with other uses and buildings. The purpose of this standard is to ensure that the development is complementary to the built context, to avoid large undifferentiated or blank building facades, and provide some visual interest at pedestrian levels. The west facade does include some visual interest to avoid blank spaces in the short term and plan for the long term and the eventual development of the adjacent property that could also be built at the zero-foot setback. The transparency design on that west facade meets the purposes of the standard and allows the building to meet other design standards for scale, variation, massing, orientation, and dimensional standards. For the north facade, the variation in transparency is minimal and will likely not present much, as much different from nearby buildings that may or may not meet these standards. So we find that that north impact is almost equal to the standard. With all of that information, we do recommend approval for this development plan with some conditions. We did receive one sort of last-minute public comment that I provided to you in email. I do think the commenter is here, and he can provide some information, but that's about all I have.
Great, thank you very much, Toby. Questions from commissioners?
I'll start real quick. I have three things I need help with. My first question is actually going to be to both staff and the applicant to help me understand. I'm looking at those commercial spaces on the ground floor, which, in theory, I very much support, just to give context to my question. At 11 feet wide by about, I think I measured right, 35 foot deep, can you give me any context to the size of that and how that's going to be a successful commercial space?
We did ask the applicant, they can speak to it, to provide some, some information to that regard, that these would be viable commercial spaces. They did provide some information from a Realtor that said these could be used as single-person offices, offices perhaps for a lawyer or an accountant, or perhaps a therapist, something to that effect on the ground floor. They may also work for a small studio for personal services, that type of thing.
Thank you, Toby. And yeah, please, Eric.
I think Toby sort of addressed it. We had quite a bit of discussion with Realtors in the community as we worked on this plan to make sure that what we were proposing to do with the commercial space made sense. I've got a letter I'm happy to pass out that summarizes our discussions with Cam Boyd, because we talked to him about sort of the vitality or viability of these commercial spaces, and his recommendation was keep them at 400 square feet or less, because he felt like the demand and the leasing of those spaces would work well. He said some of the larger spaces, which reflect what we're seeing in some of the vacancies in town, he said are much more difficult, he thought, from a rental standpoint, that there was a shortage of these smaller spaces, and so that's what basically we've done.
Okay. Just help me with context, or maybe it's helpful to the group as well, but I'm trying to picture other kind of relatively small commercial spaces that might be about this size that are successful. And I'm thinking maybe that helmet store there at 7th and Lincoln, is that about this size that we're talking about? I don't know how well you've got all the stores in town memorized.
We've been here for almost 40 years, and we've never had over 400 square feet.
So about that size is working really well for you.
It works well for us. I mean, if we had to lease 800 square feet, it wouldn't probably be success, successful to us just from the rent perspective.
Right. And you've got, for example, like even across 10th, we've got those like individual slotted stores. Are those about 11 by 35, or those are probably just a little bit wider?
They may be smaller. They may be more in the 250 to 300 square foot range. But based on the input we had from the real estate community, they were saying, let's stay around 400 or less, because we think that's the sweet spot in terms of being able to lease these or sell them.
And that's what I'm picturing from the west, like a few of them are about that size, but then the corner one is a little bit larger, so you've got some variation in commercial size.
We do.
Okay, thank you. My second one, if you guys don't mind, so that I can noodle on it for a quick second. Toby, the, I want you to help me with the definition of a pertinence. I personally have a much easier time understanding that kind of contiguous airspace in there being a maximum height variance that seems more easily supportable than saying that it's not a part of the building. Can you help me with how you arrived at that?
What was the word you asked her to define?
Pertinence.
We do have it defined in our code, so I can read it out for you. So we have some exemptions to dimensional standards for maximum height, and so building appurtenances may not exceed the maximum height unless they, in aggregate, do not cover more than 10% of the total building. And we give some examples of appurtenances, though those are unoccupied architectural features that could include domes, cupolas, or spires, so chimneys, spires on tops of churches, monuments, screened mechanical equipment or parapet walls. So they are supposed to be, I think, decorative in nature for the most part, not entirely functional, not entirely occupiable spaces to provide a service or a function generally, whether it's architectural or functional from the equipment that's listed. So those spaces on the top of this building were evaluated for appurtenances. They were reduced in size throughout the course of the project. They do provide only the required space necessary for stairways and elevators to access those rooftop decks.
And that's probably where I'm the most stuck, right, is that it is, I mean, it's not habitable, and I've definitely participated in that unique thing. There's no habitable floor up there, being that it's just a landing to stairs and the top of elevator, and I get that, especially from a building department standpoint, but from a, the way that you're describing all the other ones, none of those are inside airspaces that are part of the same conditioned airspace as the rest of the unit. This is very kind of different in nature to that. I also could imagine a world where that's a very easily supportable maximum height variance, being the tiny nature of it, center of the building, not viewable, all those things. How did you, both, and Eric, you can chime in too if you want, but how did you end up as, no, that's the same as a spire?
Yeah, I think that we did, we evaluated height variance, that, again, these spaces and some of the other features that were on the top of the roof, as this project began and evolved, did have some more structure. It felt like more presence on the top of the roof. So the applicant can describe it, but they did try to reduce the size of these. They did feel like they could be sort of architectural features and sort of equivalent to some of those other types of occupancies that are listed as, as appurtenances. So that, that's how we got there.
Thank you.
I'll also just chime in. I think, so I, I think you're asking really good questions based on the definition in the code. We have, I don't know how long ago, maybe 10 years or so ago, since then, have been looking at rooftop access features as appurtenances consistently on other projects. So I, you know, whether right or wrong, that is how we have been consistently applying the rooftop pertinence for rooftop access.
Okay. I appreciate that, especially with the context of other projects. If you had anything to add, but if you don't, that's okay as well.
Projects here in Steamboat, we did it over on the flat tops project where we've got rooftop access, and we've done this in a lot of other communities, and typically, as long as there's not, you know, like a sitting room or some occupiable space at the top of the stairs, they've been typically, in most communities as well as Steamboat, considered appurtenances as long as they're just providing access. I would also add that we have all of the mechanical equipment, condensing units, our rooftop, so we kept them off the ground in front of the building. So having that stairway and elevator go up there also provides access for maintenance of that rooftop equipment. And so the rooftop equipment for the commercial spaces on the ground floor is located rooftop as well as the AC equipment for the residential units. So in each of those units, essentially, we've got three condensing units, so we have a total of probably 15 condensing units on the rooftop that are nestled in the center and tucked in next to that stair tower, so it provides access as well for those.
Thank you, Eric. I'll take a break. Any other questions from commissioners?
Just had a question about parking, and more specifically around commercial parking. I see in the memo from the applicant, you're meeting, you're, two things. One, I see what the requirements are. I was having a hard time finding where those commercial spaces were in the plan, and is that, and for example, you're required to have four spaces for, for the commercial areas, I read it, and then one bike space. Can you show where those are on the plan? And hopefully you're doing more than one bike space.
We are. We can probably park about four bikes along the side, right, whoops, along here. We've got three commercial parking spaces here, plus we gained two essentially by filling in that current drive access coming off of 10th Street. So we've essentially added five spaces to the overall site that are not designated as residential parking.
Sure, but, but the ones on 10th Street will not be reserved. Anybody in the public could park there, correct?
Correct. We're just adding to the overall park, and then we've got three spaces.
That would be reserved for commercial tenants?
For those commercial tenants.
David, I'll just add that there is a code standard, a development standard, that when an access is closed and parking spaces are created, the applicant gets a credit, a half-space credit. So there are two spaces that they're, that they're building. By closing that access, give them a one-space credit to meet the four-space requirement for this, this project.
Great. Thanks for that explanation.
Other questions?
I'm trying to figure out a little bit more about what's happening on the west side. It's up to the zero lot line. We have a variance for glazing on it, and the Steamboat Fish and Meats building is over there. Could they build right up to the zero lot line also?
They could. Yeah, they could.
So that would, that would then block off, you have a little, little green area there. So would, if there was zero lot line, what would happen there?
Well, essentially, if it was zero lot line, they could enclose, if you will, this space. These darker areas are really just fenestration, they're not windows. So if they built up to the property line, which they could physically do, it wouldn't block any windows. The windows that are sitting here, and if you go back to that plan, Toby.
You want a floor plan?
Yeah, that's probably right there. Those windows that account for that small percentage of the windows here that face the courtyard, so if they built up against the property line here, essentially, we still have this open courtyard from a, from a light standpoint or ventilation standpoint of those windows. They wouldn't cover those windows.
And would they be get, be able to get out to the courtyard, or is that?
Well, no, because that courtyard would essentially be the same as these other courtyards then, that it would be enclosed. It'd be just a ventilation and light courtyard in there.
Okay, gotcha.
But it wouldn't block any windows, because they have the right, essentially, to build right up against that west property line.
Other questions?
Sorry, Rebecca. I have a sign, I know. Like I say, in the, I thought the zero lot lines were associated with the decks, and we've had issues before where the decks, you build a zero lot line, and then somebody comes in, builds a zero lot line right next to you, and then there's a conflict, you know, variance versus variance, which I don't think applies here, because we don't know what's going to be built next door on those zero lot lines.
I appreciate the added information to his question, but let's keep to questions as much as we can. Thank you. I agree with your answer. Any, any from you, or I'll come back?
No, I'm, I'm fine, actually.
Rich, I think you were leaning forward to a question?
For the applicant, I noticed the snowmelt along the alleyway that you're providing doesn't extend to the property line. That seems like a little bit of a mystery to me.
We'd be happy to, but we can't by code. There's a restriction in the code that says we can't snowmelt that five foot that's in the easement there, which we haven't.
So does that become snow storage when the alleyway gets plowed, and how does that get removed?
Basically, that would be under the obligation of the unit owners, but we're technically not allowed to snowmelt out to the edge of the alley. We would if we could.
I would think so. Okay, thank you. While you're there, I'll ask you this question first. The building to the front, front lot line, and you're utilizing the recessed entrances to the storefronts, to the commercial properties, how do you feel that would positively or negatively affect street-level vibrancy?
I think actually, if you look at a lot of the commercial properties along Lincoln Avenue, whether it's FM Light or any of those stores, typically, the, the entries are recessed a little bit, so that people have the opportunity to at least stand at the door and be out of the weather, so the door swings, which, in a lot of cases, go into that recess, provide some degree of protection at the entries, but all of the physical fronts of the commercial spaces, the storefront glass, if you will, is right out on the setback. So the only thing recessed is the entry, which is pretty typical of what you see up and down Lincoln Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just clarification, going back to that west side. If, if it's zero lot line, if we build up to zero lot line, how, why do we have a, it seemed like they wouldn't have a glazing requirement, and so I'm kind of caught there of like, why do we have a glazing requirement when you actually don't, can't have windows there?
We, we do probably have some conflicts in our design standards in the code. We are always trying to work and remedy those, hopefully soon. So we do kind of recognize the glazing in the decks and the zero foot. It is a zero-foot minimum, so you don't have to build to the, to the setback. However, to have a small amount of space between property lines leads to sort of strange spaces in between buildings, so it seems like it should kind of be, in general, zero-foot or a lot more than zero. So, so we have a couple conflicts that we're, we're trying to resolve.
Either zero max or 10-foot min, right? Like reduce the ability for snow and drainage to have a problem kind of thing. Yeah, thank you. Should we go to public comment real quick, what you guys are thinking about? Is there any public comments on this agenda item? Great, thanks for waiting with us. Come on down. Please give us your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
My name is Boyd Bass, 3109 Aspen Wood Lane. Appreciate your time. I'm here today to highlight to the commissioners how the project fails to satisfy the approved criteria of each of these requests and to identify certain deficiencies with the project that I believe have been overlooked in this meeting. The conditions for the criteria for approval, you should know that, so we're gonna, we're not gonna, but the, I urge the commissioners, urge you to peel back the layers and carefully examine what is being proposed for development in a core commercial district of our community. While the project has been packaged and presented as a commercial development whereas a residential subcomponent, it is in reality primarily a residential development that merely pays lip service to commercial uses. I would dedicate my remaining time to explaining why this is inconsistent with the character of the commercial zone district and highlight how the project does not adequately mitigate adverse impacts to adjacent properties. The commissioners should, should be requiring the applicant to tailor the project to requirements of the CDC rather than modifying the requirements of the CDC to suit the applicant's preferred design choices. This project is cloaked as a primarily commercial mixed-use development, boasting a total of six commercial spaces and five residential units. That does not tell the whole story of the roughly 25,000 square feet available in this building. Of the roughly 25,000 square feet available in this building, only 3,400 feet is dedicated to commercial use. That represents less than 14% of the total building area. The remaining 21,600 square feet or 86% of the building will be allocated to residential uses. It is evident that the primary use of the building is residential, but is presented as a mixed use in order to check the box for commercial uses. The building is already being marketed as providing unparalleled luxury in the heart of downtown Steamboat Springs, featuring private courtyards, rooftop decks, and high-end amenities. This is not aligned with the intended commercial purpose of the CY2 zone located in the heart of the city and considered to be its core economic center. The Steamboat Springs Development Plan states that retail, restaurant, institutional land uses should be the only allowable ground use along Yampa Street between 10th, uh, 5th and 10th. Here are the project's significant residential component is detr- is detracting from active commercial uses in the area. The, the residential component is on the ground floor of this project. I know I'm running close on time here, so, um, to illustrate private elevators serving each residential unit across the rooftop decks atop this building effectively are creating a fourth story. These rooftop appurtenances, um, on the, uh, the deck, you know, is, um, but I, we don't know what items would be on this deck, you know, hot tubs, patio furniture, et cetera. I know my time's up, so I encourage you to read the rest of this. The, the project has not presented, you know, the adverse effect to potential properties and, and, you know, the conclusion, I realize I'm out of time, so, um, but I feel there's, there's, um, you know, that's, I appreciate for your time. I, um, I don't oppose development on this site. I just think it needs to comply with the, with the CDC and, and the intent, Commercial Business District. Thank you for your time.
And thank you for your comments. There's any other public comments on this agenda item?
My name is George Bagwell. I live full-time at 941 Lincoln Avenue, R7. That's Residence 7. That's the Victoria Building. And, uh, I'm there full-time. I want to direct your attention to, uh, the last page of the handout you just got where it says conclusion. And I'll follow up here. In conclusion, uh, my friend Boyd would like to reiterate the following points. Number one, the project does not appear to satisfy all required criteria for approval under the CDC for proposed conditional use, development plan, and major variants. Number two, the six total variances requested by the applicant demonstrate that on its face, the project is not consistent with the requirements envisioned of the CDC for the CY2 zone. And number three, uh, the CY2 zone is intended to promote and serve commercial uses. Within Steamboat's core economic zone, the project's clear focus is residential. And it comes at the expense of potential commercial uses on the lot and would further diminish the limited supply of prime commercial real estate located within the vibrant pedestrian streetscape along Yampa Street. Two other comments I would make. That rooftop arrangement, um, effectively, um, I think creates a fourth story. At least visually, depending on your perspective. And, um, the other comment I want to make is, um, many folks have, um, asked me, well, what about parking? You know, they're going to lose, I don't know, about 30 spaces or so. And, um, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. Any other public comment on this agenda item? Seen none in person, uh, seen nobody online to make a public comment, uh, closed public comment. Does the applicant have any final follow-up? Nope. Staff?
No.
Any final questions?
Yeah, I have, I have a question based upon the, the previous Kupova comment. They have a statement here, Steamboat Springs Downtown Plan states retail, restaurant, and institutional land uses should be the only allowable ground floor along Yampa Street between 5th and 10th. Where is that written?
It is in the downtown plan. It's in, um, goal L U Z 1, so, um, I can share my screen, put this up there for you. Okay. So, um, goal L U Z 1 is to maintain land uses that contribute to street level vibrancy in a critical retail core. There's a couple other places throughout the downtown plan that talk about the critical retail core between, being between 5th and 10th Street. So, um, here's the statement, uh, ground floor uses on Lincoln Avenue and Yampa between 5th and 10th. Um, and then it goes on to say that we would allow a greater diversity of uses, including office and residential on the ground floor outside of this core area. So, um, we are moving outside of the core area on this side of the street. So we do find that this is consistent with, um, these goals and intents in the downtown then, um, through our analysis.
Can, can you repeat that, where you did, that last statement? I didn't quite get that.
So, um, the, the 5th to the 10th is our, is our retail core on Lincoln and Yampa. This property is on the far side of 10th, so while it is on 10th, it is moving towards 11th. So we found, find that it is, um, outside of the, the core and where we would allow more uses like office and retail. That has been considered in some other uses that we've thought about and talked about that are on 11th Street and 4th Street, uh, throughout the downtown. So we don't find that this proposed, the proposed uses that could be there would be inconsistent with what we have.
Any other final questions? Okay, I'll close our public portion and come to commissioners for discussion and motion.
I, um, I'm supportive of the project. I'm glad, I'm glad it's a mixed-use development. There's no doubt in my mind it's in the green zone and ultimately it will be short-term rentals in some form or fashion. It would just be my guess, uh, which is pretty much a commercial enterprise. The concern about a net loss of parking, I would guess it's 30 or 40 spaces. And that's a bigger issue than this project, uh, although I really hate to see that loss of parking, especially where it is. That parking lot is always full.
It is, but how do you, how do you force a private? You're probably already getting there, but you can't force a private.
You can't force a.
Owner to take down that burden.
No, you can't. Uh, but it is a loss and it's a, that's a city problem that we need to deal with ser- seriously. I do have an issue with the zero lot lines on the decks, just because, well, we talked about previously. The commercial spaces of 1135 by 11, 11 by 35, uh, this is not the first time we've heard that less than 400 square feet is a reasonable number for, uh, commercial sites. Matter of fact, we have the, oh, was, there's the art gallery on like 4th or 3rd, one of those, one of those streets. Uh, and that's because they're not being rented and that's the concern. And I've heard it many times from the resident, the realtor people. So from my standpoint, it's, it's a supportable project. There are a lot of variances. Most of the variances are associated with setbacks and the modulation of the, you know, um, those setbacks seems to be a reasonable approach.
I would tend to agree with you that they're meeting the intent. While there is a large number of variances, that they're, they're generally meeting the intent, the, the undulation of the building, the character of the building, things like that, when they're stepping back, say further than they should or, or less than they should, that kind of a thing. And, and the intent is met. The other thing I would add on to your variance point is the, uh, the glazing is strange along the west side. I think that that is, I think Toby said it better than I could. That is something that needs to be cleared up in the code and that is actually more of a hazard than a, uh, vibrancy benefit to the town. And so I don't have, I'm there. But what I do think is successful is that along the two active corners of the building, they exceed it substantially and, and that that's, um, that's really what we're talking about here rather than on that northwest side. So I really don't have a problem with it either. Uh, I had a little bit of problem with the commercial sizing. I appreciate Toby's and Eric's response and yours as well. I, I don't want it to accidentally become what the public commentators mentioned, which is a piddly amount of commercial in order to get residential. I want the commercial to be able to function successfully as commercial in our commercial core. Uh, I do, I do think that that's happening and I do think that where the residential is located on the east corner there, uh, is, is minor in nature and doesn't take away from the commercial kind of vibrancy of the pedestrian, uh, level. So I, I support that as well. Um, and then lastly, the, the roof deck component, um, if we are going to consider interior spaces within that definition, I recommend we change that definition. But understanding that they've kind of, uh, preliminarily adopted that or kind of, you know, acted in that way, um, does make sense. And even as a overall height variance is, I was kind of putting myself in what would those kind of arguments have been? And I could have even supported that as minor as it is. So really don't have an issue with the appurtenance, um, component either. So I'm, I'm just supportive of the project as it is.
And I'd add that it's, they're 14-foot heights on the commercial properties.
Yeah, I know, very tall. Absolutely. Additional discussion or motion?
Is it on now? Sorry about that. Um, I think the worst thing that we could see is a 2,000-square-foot commercial space that sits vacant because nobody can, nobody can afford to rent it. And so I appreciate that the developers that are developing these buildings are staying on top of what's actually, uh, rentable and what's actually viable because their business depends on it. So unless we want to say we can't do something under a certain number of square feet, I don't think that we necessarily get to dictate that.
I agree with you 99%, right? Like there's a, there's a five-foot by five-foot size that is an obvious, no, no, that's not a commercial space, right? Like there's a point where I think we do have a tiny as bit of control, but I totally agree with your point.
I mean, to, to a point, I don't know. I, I could see somebody proposing micro offices and those renting like hotcakes. I mean, I just.
I don't mean to take you down that.
I guess I just don't think that unless we, unless we put in the code that we want them a certain size, I don't, I just think that we get to let people think outside the box and if it fails, that's their business.
Totally. Rich, you were going to jump in.
Yeah, I mean, I would think until we see a problem with these smaller spaces, it seems like they are renting. I was pretty skeptical. We had the one, Alpiner Motel, and there's been a couple of them and they seem to be staying occupied. So, yeah, that's where that goes, I think. It's like enough for us to decide what is the appropriate size limit. The only slight pushback on that is since they're not doing red, commercial on all of the ground floor, that's where we have some way to say at least we want more commercial. We can't tell them how big to make those spaces are, but that is also a variance request that comes under our purview, they're not the size of each one. It was also brought up about the number of variances. And in the past, we had required a number of variances to go through a PUD process and we completely changed that. So the number of variances does not mean that it is not in compliance with the zone district. Each of those variances are viewed individually. That's why we have a 23-page staff report, you know, analyzing each and every one of those variances. I think we should cover them a little bit more. Lou covered a couple of them, uh, multifamily residential on the ground floor, on the ground floor. I think they've, whether they've just met the bare minimum of commercial space on the ground floor to, and I, I think that I'm okay with that because they've addressed the major components, Yampa Street and most of 10th Street with commercial. The next one is, sorry, my fingers are scrolling slowly. Uh, oh, the 25-foot setback or step backs. I'm glad that we didn't get a very tall walls with the applicant stating that, oh, if I did step backs, we would get a wedding cake, uh, building. And we've heard that before from some very specific applicants. And I like the look of this. They've done a good job of, maybe they didn't meet the code to the letter, but when you look at this building, you don't see large walls. You see lots of, uh, variations to the facades. I think they did a really good job on mitigating the fact that they didn't, the letter, meet that variance. Variance number two, uh, the porch or decks. I mean, the building's built to zero and the decks are within the building envelope. I guess I really have trouble understanding the downside of the way they've done it. So I don't have a problem with that. Full width of the building facade should be built to the minimum front setback. I addressed that with the question, the alcoves are the part that aren't built to the front setback. I think they're kind of interesting. It's not enough for me to say I don't like it. I think doors on the actual frontage would be more of an invitation to the public. But if I look at that orientation, it also could be a little confusing to the pedestrian about whether they are being asked to come into that building or not, because even the doors themselves are not facing the, the street. But I can live with the protection idea of weather protection, et cetera. It looks, it still looks okay and they've met most of that requirement with most of the building being up to the facade or the facade up to the lot line. And I'm glad we didn't see any variance to that. Full width of the building, uh, I was okay with that along 10th Street. I thought it, uh, the applicant made good reasoning for that, creating some visual and sunlight, uh, options to not build all the way to the, to the, like, because there's actually other buildings that are building almost a zero lot line on both sides of the alleyway and they have become very interesting travel ways in the wintertime. Something else that we need to be thinking about. Variance number five is, oh, that's building shall be the full width of the lots. What was number four? Oh, I said that one. Sorry, moving on.
The other building facade.
And number six, oh, is transparent glazing. I think you guys already addressed that and I agree with those comments.
Trivik, thanks for going through them. Anybody more discussion or emotion is always welcome?
I think, oh, go ahead.
Couple of comments. One, I think, I agree with everything. Rich, thanks for going through those items. I think that was helpful, um, just to rehear that. I would also say, there's been a lot of talk around town around view corridors and I think they did a nice job making sure you can still see as you walk down 10th Street. Toby, I want to say, good job on the report. Very thorough, easy to read and go through and understand what's going on. And Scott and Lynn, thanks for letting the public park for free on that property. I hate losing these spots. I couldn't find a spot to park last night. We're going to lose 30-plus spots. So that's a problem that the city, city's got to figure out. The council's probably going to spend some money on something. But I support this project and the variances or the, the items, uh, as described, makes sense.
I think that sometimes, and we've had projects like this recently where it's, it feels like this, a list of variances can feel like you're trying to fit a square peg, square peg in a round hole, where it's just too many different things that you're asking for to change from code. But I don't think that this is an example of that. I think that these variances, if anything, indicate that maybe there's some work that needs to be done in the code, not, I think our code is great and it can anticipate everything, but these, a lot of them feel like technicalities that maybe some of them even. that maybe some of them even conflict with other pieces of the code. So not all of them, but this doesn't feel like a square peg round hole situation just because there's six variances, it doesn't. That none of them bother me. Every single one of them, I think, is fully supportable by the criteria that we get to analyze them by. And when you think about the density and the height and even if they met every letter of the code on this lot, I think that the building that could have been proposed here would block a lot more views, feel a lot bigger standing on the street next to it. So I agree that, I think that the design is great and I'm fully in support.
Do you want to turn that into a motion?
Nope. Yeah, let me, just a quick comment.
Yeah, great, John.
Yeah, so I'm in agreement with what I'm hearing here. I also, you know, feel like we've looked at other projects, you know, recently. And, you know, I think that some of the decisions that they've actually made were actually good decisions. I look at the massing, taking 8%, 18% of the massing so that you can maneuver a car in there. There's other projects we've seen around that basically that's had safety, you know, concern. And also allows, you know, some of the setback and goes against and requires some variances associated with that. But I think they're actually, you know, good variances. I do have, you know, for the conditional use and the fact that it is a pedestrian vibrant area, I do wish that there was larger commercial space. I do share, you know, the concern that came up is that, you know, this is significantly only 18% of the building or 14% of the building is commercial. I do wish it was larger commercial. I think of things like restaurants that add to the vibrancy of the area and we are short on restaurants, restaurant space. And so that would allow it now. But there are no code guidelines for that, to your point. But those are things of, it's a conditional use, we get to choose. And is this still keeping the vibrancy? And so that's where you can do some trade-offs on that piece. But in general, I'm very supportive of the project.
Cool. Now, does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve BL 20250020 and 14 conditions.
Second.
A motion of second. Anybody, anything else came to mind? Okay, great, I'll call for a vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. That motion passing the embassy as well. Thank you for your time. Rebecca, do we have a director's report this evening?
I do not. Oh, actually, I'm sorry. I just want to remind planning commission, if you have topics or suggestions of topics for work sessions, trainings or just other discussion items, please send them my way so we can work on our next work session topic.
Terrific.
I would add STRs to that.
Well, not tonight, we're not going to paddle out.
We're not going to talk about that.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Can I get an update from Rebecca on STR website updates?
Can you do that offline? Does that need to be part of the public meeting?
Oh, okay. Yeah, offline.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Some moved. Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Can we adjourn?